Today's date is November 18th, 2020. It's about 6:31. Les, could you please take role call?
Yes. My mic is on, yes it is. Jeff Polaris?
Here, at my home, in the middle of quarantine for COVID.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Here I am in my home.
Al Dahlgren?
Here, at the district office.
Shannon Hawes?
Here, at the district office.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
I am here at my office.
Zach Dorhold?
Present at the D A O.
Les Green is remote from his home in St. Cloud. Also present, Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Dr. Marcia Baish, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Lori Putnam, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Lori Posh, Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education, Carol Potter, Executive Director of Research, Evaluation, Assessment, and Enrollment, Dr. Sylvia Huff, Executive Director of Community Education, Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, Amy Scalerud, Executive Director of Operations, Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Human Resources, Tracy Flynn Bowe, Director of Community Education, or Community Engagement and Communications, Tammy Deland, Director of Equity Services, Ellen Stewart, Director of Technology, Ryan Cox, and Executive Assistant, Mary Kuesterman.
Thank you, Les, and if you don't adjust that camera, we'll never see that beautiful smile of yours.
Well, I didn't want you to know. Didn't want you to know I was reading it off the paper.
Okay. Would you mind leading us in the pledge, please, Les?
Certainly, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Les. All right, approval of tonight's agenda? I'm looking for motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Okay. Les, could you take role on that, please?
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Zach Dorhold?
Yes.
Les Green is yes. Jeff Polaris?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Les. Tonight's consent agenda. We have item A, it's approval of our minutes for our meetings that we held on October 21st, November 4th, and November 13th. Item B is approval of bills and other financial transactions in the amount of Item C is approval of staff and personnel changes. Item D is acceptance of grant awards and donations. I'm looking for motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
And I have a second.
All right, could you take Les' role again, please, Les?
Jeff Polaris?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Zach Dorhold?
Yes.
Les Green is yes.
Thank you, Les. We will jump into the information items. First up tonight is item A, it's the Apollo High School presentation. It's going to be done by Principal Alicia Fisher.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Chair Polaris, Superintendent Jett, the Board of Education, and also cabinet members and our community members. My name is Alicia Fisher, and I am proud principal of Apollo High School. And tonight, I would like to share with you the great things that are happening at Apollo. And in the theme of collaboration and partnership, and as Jeff mentioned prior to the meeting, teamwork, I'd also like to mention individuals that have been supportive to us and generous in their donations. And I'd like to share that this evening. And specifically call out the Knights of Columbus 5548 for student supplies and Stern's Electrical Association for our Granite City Gearheads, which is one of our robotics teams. Lauren and Jordan Stock to the friends and family of the Dan LaFontaine Memorial Scholarship, Kimberly Anne Ritchie Memorial Fund for our Wellness Center, and Coburn's for our school rewards. And ongoing donations from the Koch Family Foundation for Random Acts of Kindness. I'd like to thank everybody for their donations and everything that they've done to support Apollo High School and our school district. And there's really no better way to kick off this presentation this evening than to hear our district's theme, the Be the Difference video. And Ryan, if you could go ahead and cue up that next slide, sit back and enjoy and see how we continue to be the difference.
What I do when it comes to the curriculum is I look at first, what does the Minnesota Department of Education say? What are my expectations for culinary classes? But I also, because I know the tech college learning outcomes and objectives, I kind of try to match them as much as possible. A lot of stuff kind of just is a way to introduce things if they're interested in their career, but it's also a skill for life. So I see it kind of as a seamless transition. If they want to go to culinary school, they're not going to be completely in the dark. They're going to know specific things, they're going to have those hands-on experiences. But regardless of what they do in their life, they're going to need to feed themselves. Right now, there's a need for cooks, there's a need for people. Expanding options for students has been my big part, right? So every student, every home situation is different, you know? If I'm doing a lab on how to do your knife skills, how to cut up something, you know? In class, if we're doing knife skills, I would provide things like carrots, onions, celery, and things that they could practice, holding the knife, cutting things. So instead of just having those specifics, I've been having to broaden it out and saying, hey, let's cut up anything if you have a carrot at home, if you have these different things. But I've also had to kind of adapt it in terms of students who might not have equipment. So for every type of hands-on equipment, hands-on lab that I do, I always provide alternative assignments for them. When it comes to doing my demonstrations, I have my own GoPro camera that I use. I set it up in my kitchen at home, and I just record lessons. How to make a specific dish, how to make Ratatouille, how to make chicken Parmesan's, how to make vinaigrettes from scratch. But I tape myself, record myself, and then when it comes to being in that online class, we do some brief presentations, they watch videos. We have great discussions over what's good, what's not, what we like, to kind of get that full enrichment.
Recently, we were able to through some partnerships with some surrounding companies, we got involved in this SME Prime program. Companies like International Precision Machining, Grady, C4 Welding, CWMAP, and Park Industries, they really generously helped us out to be able to purchase this cobot. And what that means is a collaborative robot. We're really serious at Apollo about being able to provide experiences for our students that allow them to pursue their dreams and get real-world experience right here at Apollo. We're really passionate here about making sure that, you know, we are educating in partnership with the surrounding community so that students get a chance to utilize tools like this that are actually in use in industry. It allows the user to collaborate with the robot. It can sense the human touching it, you can guide it and teach it. As a high school student, you get a hold of this registration guidebook. And in the book, there are these pathways for you to take, and they tell you to take this, this, and this course. And each course is like its own little island. And it's really exciting that we're able to, through programs like this, create these internal partnerships within the school so that we have resources that multiple curricular areas can use. My students are going to learn how to program this thing from a computer, but we also might utilize it in physics. Over in the career and technical ed wing, obviously, this will be a fantastic resource so that students, again, can pursue those dreams that they might have.
I think as a curricular activity here at Apollo, it helps kids build their character. I think it helps with social skills. I think it helps with dealing with adversity, holding accountability, becoming a leader. I think sports does all that for our kids here. Whether you play in sports or whether you not, think about the kids that come, and they come and cheer on the team. They create posters, they yell, they can create chants. Sports is a benefit, and it's a way for them to like get away from anything else they got going on in life that's not so good for them. If I'm preaching to my players, they got adversity and their comfort zone, and we have to do some things in life that we may not want to do, I got to follow that. And you don't think the kids are really watching, but they are, trust me. I over at the elementary, I've had plenty conversations with them. I think with our basketball team this year, we end up winning a section championship. That day was really wild. But it was like, once we walked in the gym, I knew how that night was going to go. I didn't know it was going to come down to a last-second shot, but I knew how that night was going to go. And it's special for that group because we grew up together, then we got that win, so we're pumped. I fell out all over the floor, and we're going crazy on the bus, and then we get back the next day, they cancel the state tournament, and that was probably the hardest time that I ever had to deal with something like that. You know, I miss them, man. Hopefully, that they understand that it was nothing we could control. But it also showed them that you can't take this for granted, you can't take life for granted. And sometimes, you got to get a positive out of negative stuff, and that's the positive I got out of that. And I hope to keep that tradition going here at Apollo.
7:42, be the difference. 7:42, be the difference.
7:42, be the difference.
As you can tell, that video really exemplifies probably about the partnership and collaboration. And when you take a look at that first snippet of the video, and Brad Mose, who is one of our culinary instructors, his background is, he's a professional chef, and so he's bringing in skill sets that we know our students will utilize, whether or not they go into the career field of culinary. You saw Mr. Sackinger talk about the partnerships from our SME Prime Grant, which we'll hear a little bit more about in future slides, the ability for them to be able to collaborate cross-departmentally when we do have those supplies provided to us. And then, obviously, the fun video with Jason Allen, who is a C S O in our building and also a beloved coach, and just how we really offer competition for the whole child. And when we think about high school experiences, you know, my job as a principal is to ensure that every student who comes in has a positive experience. And so we want to be able to tap into lots of different ways to do that. And so, you know, who are we? Well, for one, we're the Eagles, right? And so we soar. And this is my second year as principal at Apollo High School. And this year, to me, there's never been more that I've seen out of this safe and optimistic piece of SOAR. You know, our students really take the health considerations that we've put into place very seriously. And having that word optimistic in our profile and our motto really drives us to really think about, you know, even in challenging times, how we come together and support each other. And this doesn't happen without intention. And so through leadership and the cultivation of our community, you know, having really high expectations for our learners and staff, and in providing those supports for everyone to be able to reach that. You know, I included this peace sign, which is, you know, probably one of the world's biggest peace signs ever created by 1,500 people. And again, that's not without intention. So you have to draw the lines out, you have to script where everybody goes. And, you know, that day, we were able to pull it off, and it's really awesome to be able to see, you know, obviously, our learning community together in that way. One of the other pieces that we're extremely proud of is we continue to be a leader in PBIS. In 2020, we again were a PBIS exemplar school. And, you know, those are things, like I said, that don't come without intention. And so it is because of those collaborations and partnerships within our school building and outside of our school building that we are able to produce these results. So let's look at some of the data. This demographic slide describes, you know, who we are. And just looking at the racial and ethnic breakdown, you can see that I put on the bottom, the student count was 1346 on the 11th, I'm sorry, on November 3rd. And when we look at, you know, our demographic split, we're about 60% students of color and 40% white students. And one of the areas that you can see that we're growing tremendously at Apollo, if you look at the data from 2018, 19 to our current year, we have grown from 6% to 10.3% Hispanic population of students. And so, you know, sometimes percentages aren't as meaningful as the raw data. So when you extrapolate that out, we're looking at about a 50 to 55 student increase in that area. And so we have some really specific intentions around how to support our learners in really partnering with our Learning and Teaching Department to ensure that we have personnel to help support and that we have family outreach. And so, you know, when we look at this, we are extremely proud of who we are as a school and in really intentional about supporting our growing communities. If we look at how we compare with free and reduced lunch, special education, and E L, as you look at year-to-year, one of the areas that you see growth is in our special education. We're up about 3% from just a few years ago. And, you know, some of you may be wondering, how does that compare to state averages? And so when we look at the state average for special education, it hovers around 16%. And our E L numbers are at 23% of our students are receiving E L services. And that is compared to about 8.5% statewide. You can see that we've taken a little bit of a dip in our free and reduced lunch numbers. And, you know, we have a plan to address that, and we really believe that, you know, partly because of our meal distribution plan that we currently have right now. But we have a team of people reaching out to our families to ensure that they have the supports they need and have access to food and the supports that they need beyond that as well. And so one of the things that we're extremely proud of at Apollo is we are, we service our newcomers. So when students come to us from other countries and need E L services, we are the hub. And so it's one of the reasons why you see that growth in our Latinx population. And it's something that we're extremely proud of. And, you know, one of the points of pride and reasons why I'm here tonight is to do a lot of bragging. And I will simply say that I believe that we have one of the strongest multilingual departments. I would put that department up against anybody in the state or the country. You know, their caring nature, coupled with their competencies and excellence. And one of the pieces that I find really advantageous is that we have three instructors who are bilingual in Spanish and English. And that really, really helps with our newcomers to be able to support language acquisition. Our graduation rates, this is an area that we continue to focus on as a school district and as a high school. It's in our school improvement plan. And you can see that we're slightly below the state average with our four-year rate. Our average is about 79%, and you see the state rate is about 4% higher. And one of the pieces that we are extremely proud about is our seven-year rate. We exceed the state average. And if you think about the previous slides that I shared with you, and in looking at the populations that we serve, you know, the narrative that I tell is that, you know, sometimes for us to be able to get students to that graduation, we spend more time with them. And we want to be able to differentiate and intentionally plan for each of our learners. And so you can see that that plays out in our data. And really extremely proud about our seven-year rate and being able to produce graduates that can contribute to our community. Breakdown of our ACT scores. So, you know, there's lots of stuff on the screen here. Don't be overwhelmed, I'll kind of walk you through it. ACTs is certainly something that is a snapshot that we want to share because it gives you an idea of really all of the four content areas coming together in one assessment. And for those not familiar with ACT, it is an assessment that our 11th graders take statewide. And so what you'll see is the number of students is typically really in flow with the number of juniors that we have. You're going to see a significant dip in the 2019, 2020 offering. And that really accompanied, you know, our spring with COVID coming and with ACT not being offered in the schools. And so the data that we have here is school-based ACT. And so we had several students that took that in months after, which we would typically offer that in April. When we look at that average composite score, we're hovering around that state average. You know, one of the things that we're really proud about is that when we look at that statewide assessment, in looking at the areas of the breakdown, we put some intentions around our math and reading within our school improvement plan. And we'll be working, obviously, with ACT as an organization to ensure that our juniors and students have access to be able to take that test. One of the things that has been really great in collaboration with colleges and universities as many students were unable to take the exam as they've offered flexibility in admissions and really looking at different data points as they look at admissions for students. And so our school counselors and assistant principals work around the clock to ensure that our students have wealth of opportunities as they exit our Apollo walls or our Apollo internet. Our advanced placement data is something that we're extremely proud about. And, you know, a couple of the pieces that I'll highlight here is when you look at the total number of students around that 250 mark, that's something that, you know, has stayed fairly stagnant, you know? And 2019 was at 265, and then we look at the number of exams, around 435. And so the reason why that is, you know, obviously a difference is that we have students who are enrolled in several AP courses and choose to take multiple exams at different grade levels. You know, most important marker, I believe, is looking at that third row of AP students with scores of three or more and looking at that total percentage. These are bragging rights for us as well. Students with scores of three or more mean that they're heading into a college or university setting with a leg up, meaning that they already have obtained college credits. So having that accreditation in working with AP as an organization and in offering high-rigor courses, and looking at the total number of students in 2020 who scored three or more in that 60% tile. And certainly, that's something that our AP instructors take to heart. That's part of their own evaluation with AP in the College Board. And so, you know, I'm having conversations with our AP instructors on the daily as we look at the moving target of our school and the different modes and how we ensure that we get the quality instruction in before those tests happen in the spring. Our school climate data, this is something that we set intentions around all of the time and again is in our school improvement plan. One of the pieces that I'm extremely proud about for our school community is looking at how students see themselves in relationship with instructors. Looking at the first question asked, my teachers care about me. And you can see that there's almost a 20% increase in that data from 2017. And my teachers make me feel good about myself. We have, you know, a number of students, we have 71% that say agree or strongly agree to that statement. And so those are numbers that we want to see continue to grow. But certainly, that has been some intentionality regarding clear expectations for students and then also providing supports for students to be able to reach those goals. Our attendance and behavior, so these slides are sometimes a little bit more challenging to read. So I'll help you out with the lines. So looking at the trend data here, you're looking at 1819 to 1920. And of course, part of 1920 data does have our distance learning data in there. So you're going to see a slight dip. You know, I look at the orange line, if you can see that, that is our ninth-grade attendance. And what you'll see is a slight drop from 90% to 88%. The blue line that you see is our 10th-grade data. And that is, was at 90% at 88%. And you can see the 11th-grade data is the green line, which is, starts on the bottom and trends up. And that was at 85% in 1819 and has grown to 89%. And the 12th grade is the gray line in the middle. And that is, really didn't see a much of an increase or a decrease. We're looking at about a half of a percent. And so while it looks kind of drastic when you look at the lines, really, the variations in percentages are very low. And we have our student support team, including our dean of students, really work with our students on attendance. And of course, attendance looks and sounds quite a bit different right now. And really, the word that we're using is engagement. You know, it's not enough to just be there. We want our students engaged with instructors. And really, maybe even more importantly, engaged with each other. And so, you know, really, the theme of this presentation is thinking about how we leverage partnerships and collaboration for student success. And this is one way in which we do that, is really focusing on not just the attendance aspect of it, but what that attendance looks like and how we leverage those positive relationships. The behavior data that you see on the other side of the screen, once again, bar graphs, a little bit challenging to read there, but the most important thing is that we see a lot of green. Green is good. Green means that students have had zero discipline referrals. And if we move our way up, you see the blue, and that represents students who have had very few or one. And then you get into those, what we call kind of tier-two interventions in which we know that the students who are receiving, you know, two to five or six or more behavior referrals definitely are showing us they need some more supports. And so, you know, one of the things that I think we're extremely proud about, when we come back to thinking about that, I feel it was about the third slide in which I had the PBIS piece in there, is the goal for PBIS all around is that 85% of your students are doing what they're supposed to do on the daily. And we can clearly see that this data is showing that. You know, many people ask, okay, so what are the most common referral reasons that you would see in those, in either the blue or the gray or even the yellow? In high schools, it's not unusual that truancy in attendance is the number-one referral. And then in that year of 1920, we had some technology pieces. And actually, I'm kind of proud about that, and here's why. We really tightened up our protocol when it came to cell phones and what was expected in the schools. And if you have students in the secondary buildings, you probably heard the Sky Alert messages coming home from principals, just sharing that, you know, phones are not to be used during class. And we were really, really upfront about that and really front-loaded it. And so what that meant is we saw a little bit of a spike in the referrals because it just took some time to level set and adjust. If you shift your eyes to the next set of data there, you see a lot of green. And that is our data for this year. You know, certainly not having students in brick and mortar. But even being in hybrid, we saw very few behavior referrals. I think, you know, many adults were curious, if not cautious, wondering how students would come to a building with more regulations. Sometimes students already thought that, you know, high schools are so stringent, why can't we do this and that? And so I was absolutely pleased and really just delighted about how students took our mask protocol, our spacing protocol seriously. And, you know, with some of those intentions really led to this positive data. It doesn't mean that we don't have work to do, right? We dig in, we really focus on those areas, and really the individual students that are showing that they need more support. And we're doing that by meeting with them daily through Google meets and even doing some safe home visits, just to show students that we're still here. Even if we don't see you in the building each day, we want our students and families to know that we are there to support. You know, one of the pieces that I shared with you is, you know, just how we do value partnerships. You know, these images here really represent different ways in which we partner. On the left-hand screen, that is Principal Harris from Tech High School and Alicia Fisher. Earlier this school year, we did a photo shoot with the communications department just to get our students excited about coming back to school. It had been many months since we saw them in our buildings. And Mr. Harris and I were extremely excited to welcome our students to our high schools. And so, you know, he and I have partnered on several things. And he's a little more shy than I am, so he was a little bit more reluctant to do the photo shoot. But you can he's a little more shy than I am. So he was a little bit more reluctant to to do the photo shoot, but you can tell he got into the groove there. Um on the far right, you're gonna see uh some shiny bright metal. Um and what that is 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 just an awesome collaboration with our um nutrition department and our CTE students and our instructor Mark Wymer. Um these are food waste receptacles. And so if you've been to a cafeteria in any school in our system, you may have seen these. And they are to help sort waste so that we can um be environmentally friendly and be able to provide what our community members may need in the form of waste. Um and so we constructed these. Um our students welded, they shined them up, uh they made them safe because they had to sand the edges. And so it just gives you an idea about how we partner internally. Um and then in the center screen, you you see these are our um SME prime partners. And you're gonna see a video just uh in the future here, uh probably the next slide um regarding our partnership. And that is how we were able to purchase the cobot that you saw Mr. Stockinger talk about. And that cobot is super cool. Like for me, I'm I'm I don't know a lot about robots. Um I kind of think of the Jetsons, right? And so for me, I've learned a lot about uh what robotics mean in automation. And uh he shared with you a little bit about what was cool about that. But what I didn't know is you can take this cobot and I can move it in a certain way and it will program, sort of reverse program or forward program. And so I am excited to get students back in so they can get their hands on that um and start playing around. But we obviously could not do that without the partnership with the prime organization, um which really helps schools across the country um influence engineering, automation, and really uh careers in in technical education. Um and without these five business partners and industry leaders in our area, we would be unable to do that. So um you know, lots of ways in which we partner and um provide awesome opportunities for our students. Student voice. Um one of the advantages I have uh working in high school is um being able to leverage the voice of our students. Many of them um you know, are activists and have um really their own charge. And in last year, uh I was approached by a group of students with a an advisor and it was a group uh that wanted to create a a new committee. And they called themselves ABC. And it stands for the Apollo Betterment Committee, but they came up with a mission and um in what their goals were. And so really, um they're an organization, I I call it a grassroots organization. And their main goal is to help promote the positive change at at our school. Um and to really amplify the voice of Apollo in general in our community. Uh last year, they spent a lot of time focusing on the physical aspects of the building, giving administration uh input about what they'd like to see around the school. Um and so we were able, you know, those are some technical things that we're able to do. And as a as an adult, as a principal, we're always trying to find ways to say yes to students. Um and so, you know, we really focused on what we could do within a budget um within the physical aspects of our school. Um and you'll hear from a student in just a minute in in their their focus this year is on uh social emotional support. You know, like I said, our students are so in tune to the needs of our of our own school community, um but also really looking at what are they noticing within their peer groups um when they're on the Google meets? Who's there? Who's not there? Um how do we encourage school spirit and be able to carry those things through? Um and and most importantly, how do we continue to celebrate student success? And I couldn't be more proud as a high school principal to have this coming from our students um in the future uh of of our country and our world. Um it means that we are in good hands. Um so Ryan, if you go to the next screen, I believe it will be um Paige Cox just uh giving you a quick snippet of of what their goals are.
Along with physical aspects of the school, ABC likes to focus on social emotional aspects as well. Um such as things we notice among our peers, how to create a better community at Apollo, encouraging school spirit and celebrating student success. But especially about twenty twenty years that we get to focus a lot more on the social emotional aspects because of this is learning. Along with physical aspects of the school.
So it's always funny to record off of a Google meet, right? Um and so our ABC group works with Link Crew, which is another uh student organization in ASU, which is our um it's it's our student union or student council. Um we are going to be offering some supports next week for the end of the trimester. And one of the activities that they've put together is a cocoa and cramb uh for our ninth graders to support the end of their first trimester in high school. Um and obviously, they're doing that in a safe way. And we'll be providing um a Google meet address for people to be able to gather. And so there's lots of ways in which our students and adults partner together as well to create uh supportive opportunities for students. You, as a school uh as a school district and as a board of education, I'm sure have heard a lot about BAR. Um and BAR stands for Building Assets Reducing Risks. Um it is an intentional program for our ninth graders to reduce failures and increase successes. And that is all done by an asset mindset and really digging into student data. Uh in the the key piece is adult collaboration. What you see on the screen here is a snapshot of our BAR. Um and it obviously in the digital setting. Uh and what's really awesome about that is um each of our ninth graders are involved in a BAR team. And BAR is really based on these eight pillars that you see here where we're working with the whole student. We're looking at uh data uh on a weekly basis and uh different uh teams meet and actually do a student ranking of risk. And towards the end of the week, have what they call a risk review meeting. And so students who are appearing vulnerable, either through academic social, emotional, perhaps mental health, are identified and those supports are put in place. Um one of the the pieces that I find that is um is really cool about BAR is this idea of what they call I time for fostering climate for learning. And so um our content teachers take a pause out on a rotation. And they really work intentionally um with SEL. And there are um specific designed lessons from the bar from bar organization um that really helps to build that community within that classroom and that team. And so students really feel um that they're they're part of a whole, um which is absolutely imperative, especially right now as our students are unable to come together. So creating that cohort of students is really important. And um like I shared with you, having that collaboration with our ninth grade group and having tours with our link crew and with our ABC group um is really key to helping uh support uh ninth graders being successful in their first year of high school. So let's take a look at that partnership I was talking about. Um this will give you a little bit more insight to just the breadth of of what the partnership is and uh the prime organization as well. So again, sit back and enjoy.
Supported and informed by private industry, SME Prime Partnership Response in Manufacturing Education builds research-based, cost-effective, and tailored manufacturing and engineering programs in high schools across the country, providing equipment, curriculum, professional development, scholarships, and STEM-focused extracurricular activities to students and teachers.
As a company that's been a part of this community since the nineteen sixties, it's exciting to be involved with SME, which will focus on expanding the skilled trades industry for students. Uh I've seen a growing trend for seniors to enter the workforce immediately after graduation. And a program like this can provide them with the education and options they need to be successful.
So the SME program started, it's almost two to three years ago now. So local industry partners with our school. It's kind of an investment. And so they they facilitate it. And then they dig in and they study the area and they study the industries and they look at what we're doing. And then they recommend changes on how to improve our program and and kind of take it to the next level. We've had your traditional metal fabrication classes, automotive classes. We've had some robotics classes, but we want to take it to the kind of next level manufacturing infused classes. In the past, where we would do traditional welding and cutting and safety, we will still do those things. But now we're adding like CNC um production and CNC cutting and more automation and robotics.
With the uh opportunities in the area for jobs in the trades field and in the engineering fields, it's great program. From woodworking to machining to welding to fabricating to complete engineering of new products. And we lack the employee base that we need. So introducing the young adults now to this program uh was very exciting for us. And anything that we felt we could do to help the program be successful, we wanted to be involved right away.
The partner's kind of stake in this is to help funnel more students into our kind of our high tech pipeline. It's try to open their eyes to this big world of manufacturing that is growing. And we still have the problem of not populating those jobs with talent.
I started with the company in nineteen eighty four, right out of high school. Um I started out as a general labor. From there, I went to a crane operator. I went into human resources for two years. And I've been in safety for the last twenty two years. At this facility, we make castings for the big three automakers. So there are safety critical parts. It's nice that they can actually do hands on and that better prepares them if they do go to school, because they'll have a step up on everybody else.
Equipment wise, we kind of want the best of the old and the best of the new. What we are lacking is the higher tech things that you're seeing out in industry now. And so with the help of this grant and the investment, that's gonna kind of fast track some of those things to get them into our classroom a lot faster. Park Industries is one of our partners, and we've kind of known them for a while and worked with them.
Park Industries is excited to be a proud supporter of the Apollo High School SME program. We have partnered in a number of ways over the past five years. Careers and STEM is our future. We want to invest in the growth and learning of our local students to aid in their success after high school. We look forward to meeting all the students in the program and help them prepare for their career.
I know I can rely on companies like Park Industry or International Precision Machine and and on all of our partners. So typically, we kind of do a variety of things. We do some welding, some machining. Behind me is a CNC plasma table. So there's a a variety of things that they they get to make themselves. We've gone to a model where we come up with a library of projects. And those are kind of prescribed projects. And then they build them. And then kind of after they prove themselves a little bit, then we open it up a little bit more. And they can design their own project and go from there. Another opportunity in our classes are collaborative projects. So whether with a s- the school or a business partner. Um for example, we just built thirteen stainless rolling tables for the lunchrooms. And so we learned how to fabricate stainless steel and got the equipment and the tools. So going forward now, we can fabricate stainless. And as soon as we get set up with a CNC mill, we're really excited because NASA has chosen Apollo to be a hardware school, the only one in Minnesota. They're gonna give us the blueprint. They're gonna consult with us directly with their engineers. And they're even gonna come here at some point. And we're gonna get set up. We're gonna make parts for NASA.
Seven forty two, be the difference.
Mr. Wymer is like a kid in a candy store talking about that CNC mill. And you know, Apollo, sometimes we're perfect. Um sometimes uh you know, we get it just right. And um uh I would be remiss to not celebrate uh Ethan and his perfect ACT score. Um I think, you know, one of the pieces I included this in is uh you can't read this, it's a pretty little font. But um you know, what what he's sharing in this interview is that that is not the score he got the first time. And and I share this because of the perseverance and um and in the the way in which our students um continue to strive. Um and and we want our all of our students to have high goals. And in our responsibility as a school and a school district is to have programs in place where students are challenged and supported. And uh you saw uh like I said, Mark, you know, sharing all the skills that we're preparing students um to look for in a career, perhaps in manufacturing, robotics, automation. Um but we're also doing a lot to prepare our students academically um in in to be successful with their next steps, whether it's a college, university, um going into the military branch. Um lots of opportunities. And so um like I said, you know, we wanted to really showcase not only um you know, when something is perfect, but um things aren't always perfect the first time. And so it takes great effort and um intentionality is to be able to get there. We also care. Uh we care a great deal about our students and about our staff and about our community. Um and we like to show that in a lot of different ways. Um I shared with you, you know, I I have an Instagram account and on the daily, I'm posting pictures of of the daily happenings of of students. And um you know, it's not odd for me to walk down the hall when we have students and um you know, wanting to get on the gram and and be seen. And that's just really, um you know, that's speaking teenage language, right? And and one of the ways that I connect with kids is in that way. And um then there's some more formal ways in which we do student shout outs. Um thank you to Tammy and your communications team for all of your support and getting all of those great news out. But the thing that warms my heart the most is um when students are doing staff shout outs. Um and we do that um you know, once a month. And and students have the opportunity to really share with our instructors why they're meaningful. Um and and that feedback really helps to drive our staff, particularly now when um we're not able to see our students in person. And um you know, we just celebrated uh our fiftieth anniversary. I say our birthday. Um and so we we had a a lot to celebrate. And again, hats off to Tammy and her communications team for putting together uh one of the most fabulous um compilation videos I've ever seen. I I know I learned a lot as the principal of Apollo and just the history, the pride that people have and not just the the footprint of Apollo. I love being in a first floor floor high school. Um but people really talked about um how the support and collaboration and partnership helped to drive them to careers as um models, journalists, lawyers, um actors. Um so there's lots of ways in which we have to celebrate. Um and you know, there are some informal ways and formal ways. And like I said, you know, celebrating um this fifty years of legacy um was was an exciting piece for us to be able to put together for our community. And you know, um we weren't able to gather in person. And there was a lot of sadness around that. However, what I'll share is the far reach of this video and the interactions I've had on social media with people who have been touched by Apollo in so many ways would not have happened if we would have had an in-person uh celebration. And so it was super cool to hear from you know, daughters of uh of former principals or teachers and uh you know, former graduates that um you know, reached out of the works because they got their hands on this YouTube link. So um again, was an awesome celebration. We have a lot to be proud about. And that leads us to this last slide here. Uh you know, hashtag Apollo Proud. Um you know, one of the pieces that uh you know, kids are so awesome because they uh they they're optimistic. They persevere. Um and I I had our student union come to us and said, you know what? I know that we can't be in person, but we're still doing coronation. We're still gonna make it happen. And they did. They were able to pull it off in a very safe way. Um super cute. They came up with the theme of Apollo Stay Homecoming. Um and uh it really went with that theme. And um you can just see the the pride beaming from the photos in this picture here. And that is what I have for you tonight. Um I'm hopeful that uh what I provided for you um shares uh the narrative of Apollo and and who we are and um in who we will continue to grow and forward to be um in the future with many more years to come.
All right, we will open it up for questions to make things run a little more smoothly tonight. Because I'm remote, we're gonna have a certain order for questions. So you'll know who you follow and you can be ready. Monica, you're always gonna lead us off, followed by Natalie, followed by Al, Les, Zach, Shannon, and then I'll be last. So Monica, do you have any questions?
I do, but I also have a request for flipping the order. I was in a while. So I don't have to start all the time.
Sorry, I will not give into that one. What's your question, Zo?
Oh, I'm so surprised that you're not giving in. So here we go. Um my question is thank you, Alicia. Um I I gotta say that you look great in COVID in that screen. Um I'm sorry, I don't think I hope that this is not inappropriate for a board member to say, but uh it is just not sure that I have seen that many people in the screens this way. So thank you. Uh also, eh
I'm mad at it.
I I was looking at the at the uh graduation rates and I was looking at your um eh eh at you the uh what is that? The eh climate survey. And I was noticing a drastic change from um two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. And I wanted to ask you more specifically, what did you do?
What happened? What happened? Well, you know, I think a lot of things happened. One is there was an intentional focus in listening, right? So as I came on board at Apollo High School, I spent pretty much the spring before meeting with focus groups, hearing about what they loved about Apollo and what things that they wanted to see different. And so I heard from students, I heard from staff, I heard from community members, I heard from district office personnel. And so I really, I was able to create a game plan and a blueprint for how our students see themselves on the walls of our school. And so I was really intentional about where posters could be hung and what posters were up and why. Because we want to be able to create an environment that cultivates learning for everybody. And so those were some technical pieces, right? Some technical and somewhat adaptive is this mindset of when you lift expectation in couple that was support, people will always rise. And so that was my motto. And I think that happened. And so, and the other piece too is follow-up and accountability. You know, that has to be part of a blueprint in a plan. And, you know, how do you support people who aren't able to rise to that occasion? And, you know, whether it's students, staff, or whoever it may be, just being willing and able to have challenging conversations. And to me, people where they're at and just be really transparent about what you want to see, you know, from them as a professional, for them as a 10th grader, or whatever the conversation is. So lots of ways and obviously lots of collaboration with our leadership team and bringing people on board and empowering and increasing capacity for people to be able to do that.
Thank you so much. So you have a similar pattern with graduation rates. And you also talk a little bit about COVID. And I'd like you to say a little bit more about this year and how have you seen impacting your, mostly your seniors. You talked a little bit more about ninth graders, but wanted to hear a little bit more about the seniors.
Right, so you know, our senior group, you know, it's real interesting with our junior and senior group because not only have they been impacted by COVID, but they were also impacted by the school fire. And so they were the first group of students to have had this experience of only having half the kids in the building or being in a different classroom, not your real classroom. And so, you know, to be honest, they've adjusted okay. I think that there's a lot of loss and mourning. And, you know, one of the pieces that we're extremely intentional about, you heard that from our student page, is that we really want to be looking at the mental well-being of our students. And the academic piece, certainly important, but we need to have those touchpoints with our students all the time. And so we have student support teams that reach out. And, you know, just ensuring that our 11th and 12th grade students also have a plan for when they're done at Apollo. And so we started, you know, our career chats and some of those pieces and intentional meetings with our 11th grade class, with our school counselors, and then our, obviously, our senior group. Actually, what our counselors do is they meet one-on-one with every senior during the first trimester to ensure that they have a viable plan for after-graduation and that they have the supports to be able to meet that plan. And those are happening over Google Meets and, you know, continuing to be able to reach out and have those differentiated specific supports.
Thank you so much. So what can you say that you have learned from last year, COVID, kind of ungraduations and all those things? And what have you implemented differently? Or what have you changed for this year? And what are you anticipating to have for the end of the year?
Well, one of the pieces that I think we're doing more and more is just hearing from our stakeholder groups. And so, I mean, I know people don't love surveys, but that's the only way you can get input from people, right? And so focus groups, surveys, asking, really being intentional about reaching out. It was super cute. I told you that kids reach out to me via social media, and I had a student reach out, and Tammy knows this because I reached out to her right away. It was a senior student. She said, hey, are we going to get those lawn signs again this year? Well, if you remember, we did that last year for our class of 2020 because we weren't able to come together. And so now it's just this idea of we're going to always have those dual celebrations, right? Like, hey, they loved the car parade. They want the yard sign. So, you know, I think as far as what you're asking is, you know, what we're doing differently is we're just listening more intimately. We have to be doing that to be able to serve all of the stakeholder needs that we have. And what we may think as a building principal or as an administrator of what somebody needs, we could be wrong. And so it's important that we ask that question, and we're really specific. And our ninth grade needs are different than our 12th graders. And so just being able to have that dialogue and that, you know, open avenue for people to be able to share their thoughts is key.
So Alicia, as I hear you talk, it just seems like you were describing yourself as a building principal as a person thinking in this building. And of course, and as I hear you, it feels like you are no longer thinking in this building, but looking broader. Is that a right description? And is that something that COVID might have, I mean, a silver lining of this? And is forcing you all to do this?
I mean, 100%, right? Like, our theme this year is stronger together at Apollo. And so it's this idea of, we can't really do a lot in isolation. That to be really successful in education in or outside of COVID, we need to have community partners. We need to have those supports in, whether they're satellite or, you know, really integral to what we're doing. And so you're absolutely right. It has opened our eyes to not only the needs, but how we are asset-based. What we serve as students beyond the academic day is really shining a light right now because our community is seeing us as, well, let's use the word essential, right? And so really looking at a school district as an institution that is a foundation for a community. I'm a former health teacher, so I in-and-out believe about Maslow's hierarchy, right? And so I really believe that, you know, school districts are that bottom rung, right? It's everything that you need and beyond because we want to be able to stretch kids all the way up to that self-actualization. That's the goal when they leave us, that they feel that they have all the tools that they need to be successful in whatever hopes and dreams they have.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm done. I do get prompted sometimes when I hear other people asking questions, and I get prompted for more. So I might ask you to come back to me at some point if that happens. Thank you.
You always have that option, Monica. Natalie, you're next, please.
Thank you. I think that's why he put you first, Monica, because he knows you wrap it up as well. It will be no surprise to anyone here that I love Apollo. So both my boys are there this year as ninth and 10th graders. And so, you know, as much as I can't be in the building this year, I still am so invested in what's going on at Apollo. And I just have to say to Principal Fisher that your joy is like contagious. And you just love what you do. You, it can be seen that you love who you are and that you use who you are to love the kids. And so it's beautiful. And that kind of joy just radiates throughout your teachers as well and your staff. So if you follow me on my social media, I was talking this week, and Alicia liked it, about how I get to listen to a cacophony of sounds every day with three distance learners if I'm working from home. And I was listening to my ninth grader be on band class. And his band director, Mr. Zahn, he always says, oh, Mr. Zahn, like the first half of class, he's talking to us, talking to us. And if you know Mr. Zahn, you know that's totally right. And so I'm kind of listening to what he's saying after he told me that. And he is totally socially, emotionally supporting these students individually, collectively. He's asking, you know, jazz band might have to end. How do you feel about that? You know, and going one by one. And it's just like I'm crying while I'm trying to work because it's beautiful. You know, he's, you may not be in the same room as him, but he is supporting in a way that is so, so needed at this time. Also, shout out again to Ms. Markward, who's Quinn's AP teacher. She called me and left me a message. And so I listened to it with Quinn there, and she said, this is Quinn's teacher. I'm like, oh, oh. And she said, I'm just calling because Quinn's so great. And I wanted to call and say thank you for whatever you're doing. And so then Jeremy and I walked around like proud parents for at least that night. But teachers don't have any time right now. So for her to do that, it just shows the love and the joy that you're bringing, Alicia, to the school and that my kids' teachers are. The other part of joy that I wanted to bring up, and since Apollo is one of my schools as a board member, I'm able to be at the Apollo Site Council. And that's another place for a lot of emotion. I mean, parents come there with some really hard questions. And it gets pretty emotional, but it's very one-on-one. And Alicia and her team are able to really address, over the internet, of course, those issues. So I just thank you for having that Site Council and making it accessible for folks. Like Monica said, your increases in social climate should be textbook. I mean, it's beautiful. It's beautiful to see that going up and you saying, well, we even want more of that. That's great. Anyone who knows me as well, AP is the reason that my kids are in this school district. And to have Quinn be taking three AP classes as a 10th grader is what 742 is, and it's just really beautiful. I could go on and on, but nobody wants to hear all of this, except for Alicia. And I'll tell Alicia more later. So the only question I have is, can you just give us a quick synopsis of who are our students that are graduating in seven years versus four years? What's going on in their life where they need a little bit of extra time?
Yeah, thanks, Natalie. I appreciate the question. So if you think about our demographics as they compare to the state level, you saw that we had a market increase in our EL population as well as special education. And so that it's not uncommon that our students who are on an IEP may be in transitional services, which means that they are in extended programming beyond the walls of Apollo. And so that could lead to that and also really looking at language acquisition and ensuring that our students have the academic language to absorb content. You know, certainly, when you get into, you know, 11th grade chemistry and, you know, 12th grade physics and some of these pieces, we want to ensure that not only do our students have those language skills, but they have the high school standards as well. Because the promise that we make is that our students are able to contribute to our community as soon as they graduate. So we want to ensure that we have programming that extends to that level. And we can do that within our school walls. And we can also do that in partnerships with other alternative sites that we have in our school.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Principal Fisher. Thanks for creating a joyful atmosphere for my kiddos to learn in.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Don't tell them I called them kiddos because one of them is 6'2", so.
I get it. I get it.
Al, you're up next.
I don't really have a lot of questions. I guess I'll just ask one, and it isn't necessarily to you, Alicia. It's more a question on the free and reduced lunch, the drop and the number of students in free and reduced lunch. I'm wondering if we're seeing that district-wide?
Yes, the answer to that question, Al, is that we are seeing it district-wide. And as Alicia mentioned, we are having, like, being very intentional about making sure that we are having our families complete the forms. And so that is one of the reasons that we think that we're seeing that dip is because we're offering free meals to all students. And so we're seeing a decrease in families who completed the free and reduced lunch application this year. And so Amy's department actually just spearheaded another push to get more forms mailed out to all of the families. So hopefully, we can start to get more back. But this is another push that we're going to increase it.
Yeah, because it will have a significant impact on funding in subsequent years if we don't get all of those forms back in. And that's always been a concern of doing that. I don't really, nice job with your presentation. I really like all of the things that you're doing in the CTE areas. That's really exciting. And I will say that you featured Paige Cox on there. She's an employee of mine, and we like her just as much as you guys do.
Outstanding. Well, I'm glad to hear that she is gainfully employed and using those skills. That's outstanding. Thank you, Al.
Les, you're next.
I don't really have any questions. Alicia, the presentation was phenomenal. I think the informational content kind of reflects some of the things that Natalie and Monica and Dr. Huff have been talking about in terms of adding other kinds of information to the presentations, which really was engaging in terms of the information and noting that we're higher, we have a higher graduation rate than state average at seven years, which means that when students hit 21 years old, they're ready. And so that's an important push. 18 is one thing, but to be ready. But at 21, it's where the rubber meets the road, actually. So I think you're doing a phenomenal job as a principal and as a human being with those kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Green. I appreciate that.
Zach, any questions?
No questions. Just thank you. Good job. Tough year. And just happy and relieved to see the efforts. And Mark Wymer is awesome. Just plug for him.
Absolutely. Thank you, Zach.
Shannon?
I agree with all the board members in front of me, their comments and observations. Alicia, your enthusiasm is contagious, and you can see that spreading throughout your school building, through your staff and through your students. I think it speaks highly that you have a group of kids getting together, meeting with staff at your building and coming up with a plan. It shows that they feel comfortable and motivated to do something like that. So thank you very much for providing this leadership to our students. I'm very, very impressed with everything that you presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Shannon. Alicia, I just have a couple of things on my notice. I talked to you earlier today about the donations, and tonight we actually had two more that were hidden in the consent agenda. And I just wanted to give a shout out to, it's $850 from the St. Cloud Education Association for a scholarship program at Apollo. And then item number six was $2,000 to the Apollo Scholarship Program from James and Kathleen Parsons. And it's for a 2020 Emmett and Agnes Thompson Memorial Scholarship. And I just think that's important that we reach out publicly to these people that are helping our school because we are a team and they're part of our team. So as everyone knows, I'm an Apollo graduate. I really am impressed with you as a principal. It's great. Apollo's in good hands, and it continues to be a great school. So thank you for a nice presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that.
Chair Paul, can I make a comment, please?
Please do, sir.
Alrighty, because I know Monica was thinking about going last. But so Monica, if you're going to make a comment, I will wait. Okay, so with that being said, Principal Fisher, okay, so into the board, into the community. Whenever you're getting ready to hire someone, especially a lead principal for a learning community such as Apollo, you look for someone who's a pied piper, someone who's a kid magnet. You're looking for someone who's an instructional leader. And rarely, and it's usually extremely difficult to find someone that possesses all of those qualities. And so what I feel is for District 742 and for Apollo High School, we are extremely fortunate that Principal Fisher is that person. And so Alicia, I'm just proud to know you, happy for you, and everybody that is involved or has any kind of wanting to be part of something, Apollo just magnifies and represents that. And so I'm just saying thank you. Students say thank you. Families, community says thank you. I know the Board of Education is also saying thank you. So with that, that's my only comment.
Thank you, Superintendent Jeff. That means the world to me. I really appreciate your support, and I'm absolutely honored to serve our North Side community and in the way of being a proud Apollo principal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is item 3B. It's going to be school activities and COVID updates. It's going to be done by Dr. Marcia Baish, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, and Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education.
Nice job, Alicia.
Offered that as well. Enjoyed that. Thank you. Good evening Chair Paul Reese, Superintendent Jeff, members of the board and community members joining us this evening via live streaming. Dr. Putnam and I are very happy to share this week's schools update with you. Ryan, you can go ahead to the next slide. Here's the picture. Ah, well, can I go back and see if it pops in? Aha, awesome. All right. So as you know, we are not able to take field trips this year because of COVID. The kindergarten teachers at Westwood decided that if they couldn't take their students to the pumpkin patch, they would bring the pumpkin patch to Westwood. The teachers went to a local pumpkin patch, purchased pumpkins and set them in the grassy area outside of their classrooms. Each child was able to select a pumpkin while social distancing, of course. They took pictures one at a time of the children. And once they brought their pumpkin inside, they used many of their math skills to measure and compare their pumpkins. They also learned what pumpkins need to grow. The Westwood kindergarten students in these pictures are using a GeoBoard and SnapCubes to form letters to help them remember the letter names and sounds. And kindergarten students also study seasonal change in science. They went on a walk, collected leaves and discussed the different shapes, sizes and colors of the leaves. These pictures show the kindergarten students at Westwood enjoying recess. Teachers supervise recess this year at many of our schools. At Westwood, they have divided their playground into three zones and each class plays in their own zone. Teachers have taught the children to give each other space, even went outside and keep their masks over their mouth and nose. Each day, all elementary Lincoln students participate in a social emotional learning focused morning meeting, both at home and in person. Last week, their Who I Am Wednesday focus was around a student's own culture. Students created culture frames where they shared the aspects of their culture that helped frame their thinking. Students were able to share these with their classmates to better understand one another. Here are a couple of examples from what Lincoln students shared in CSA about their culture and themselves. This year at Lincoln, students are hosting their parents for virtual parent teacher conferences. Students were given a template for slides that relate to the three building goals this year. Be safe, be kind and be your best. They were then asked to complete these slides in preparation to present them to their parents during virtual conferences. Here are a few examples from four different students of what they shared with their parents. Madison's Virtual Family Math Night was held on Thursday, November 5th as a CSA activity. All families received a packet of grade level appropriate activities for preschool through grade five. A deck of cards, colored counters and dice were included in the packet. 169 families participated and submitted a response on CSA. As you can see from the photos, math games were enjoyed at kitchen tables, living room floors, and some even enjoyed playing math games outside. It was a joyous event. Everyone has been very busy preparing for the transition of elementary and preschool students to Distance Learning 2.0. The website has been updated and includes distance learning resources in multiple languages, meal distribution information, technology support, family support, and from, and also information regarding elementary schedules. And, and I'm going to say this now before I forget, this updated website will go live on November 30th. Learning sessions for teachers have also been taking place during the month of November with the Director of Curriculum for Elementary, Laura Steppner. Session one topic was entitled Strategically Synchronous. Teachers learned seven strategies to strategically plan synchronous instruction to meet the various needs of students. Session two, the topic was entitled Marvelous Morning Meetings. And teachers learned 15 games that can be done virtually with K through 5 students. Session three topic, Instructing Through CSA, will happen this Friday. And teachers will learn four to five strategies to elevate CSA activities. From tasks students complete to leveraging the tool to create more authentic learning opportunities for students. They have had about 50 teachers participate each week. During the week that teachers plan and prepare for Distance Learning 2.0, which is next week, live teacher help sessions are also being offered. Tech integrationists and learning and teaching team members stand by, ready to support staff as they transition to Distance Learning 2.0. Live teacher help sessions will be available for teachers to drop in to get their questions answered and to receive technical and instructional support. An AM and PM session will be held on November 23rd and 24th. Sessions will also run through December on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7:15 AM to 7:45. Topics include CSOC Technical and Instructional Support, Google Meet, iPad Support, Connect Ed Support, Instructional Program Support and many other topics. Using funding sources that have been designated for use during the pandemic, the Learning and Teaching Team identified materials for students that would enhance their at-home learning time and provide opportunities for them to be hands-on. Boxes have been arriving at the district office building and items have been sorted and sent to buildings to disperse with students. You saw the video last week of a young child receiving some of those items. Materials were designated by grade level and included rulers, dice, pattern blocks, colored pencils, pencil sharpeners, whiteboards, stylus pens, holders for mass support documents and so much more. We are grateful to be able to provide grade appropriate at-home learning tools for all of our students. Elementary schools have now taken all of those supplies that have arrived at their buildings and prepared take-home bags for students, including items that they also want students to have at home from their site. And in this photo, you see the assembly line process staff at Talahi have utilized to prepare take-home bags for students. Examples of items that went into the bags include reading and math textbooks and workbooks, math manipulatives, school supplies and even winter weather wear. And in this photo, you see staff and students at Madison and Westwood preparing for Distance Learning 2.0. There has been a flurry of anticipation and preparation this week as both teachers and students prepare to go to Distance Learning 2.0. Teachers will be sharing daily schedules with families and even, and even sending alarms on students' devices to indicate when it is time for synchronous instruction to begin each day.
Thank you. Good evening. So far, our schools update this year and last spring have focused on the current, on what's happening now. And I think that makes a lot of sense, given the unprecedented nature of our, what's been happening around us. We've really had to focus on the immediate so we could take care of our, our students and of course, our staff. But despite all that's been going on, COVID transitions between learning models, we also now have to begin looking towards what's next. To continue with the great work that our teams began and prior to COVID. And then to start looking forward to what's coming next for our vision in our secondary schools. So tonight we're going to talk about, you're going to get a preview of some of the things that are upcoming so that you can start to see all of the, the work that's gone into how we're preparing our students and our schools for the upcoming school year, which would be 21, 22. So where we've been in terms of career pathways. Of course, the world's best workforce, as you guys are well aware, has two goals related to this work. And if that's all students graduate from high school and all students attain career and college readiness before graduating from high school. Those, of course, informed our strategic plan that you guys approved last year and will be approving hopefully again in January. And those are objectives 4.1 and 4.2. Increasing opportunities for students to envision their futures and explore careers and prepare for college, along with providing secondary students with a critical thinking, collaboration and community skills necessary for successful careers. To ensure that we were able to meet the world's best workforce goals and the strategic plan objectives and the strategies, we formed a Career and College Advisory Council. And this happened last September. And we did that in partnership with GSDC, the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation. And we partnered with them to recruit local employers, higher education personnel and community partners to take part in the advisory. Of course, learning and teaching, district and building administration and counselors are also on this team. And our partners are all listed here. As you can see, they're a diverse group of organizations who are all committed to the success of our students. In partnership with these folks and based off the world's best workforce and the strategic plan, we developed a vision for secondary education relative to career and college attainment. And this work is what guides the 742 Career and College Advisory Council. You'll see that it's a, what we developed was a comprehensive vision covering grade six through 12 and focusing on continuous exposure to career base, careers based on the developmental needs of our students and tied to the demands of our local workforce. The, the group also emphasized that all students have access to work experiences at some point, whether that is a micro internship, whether it's a job shadowing. And that our students also have access to earning post-secondary education credits. And finally, that all students graduate and they do so with the skills that are necessary to be healthy, happy and productive citizens of ideally this community, but of any community that they choose to go to. So thank you, Ryan. Over the past year, the advisory has had the opportunity to preview course offerings and provide suggestions for any additions. As I quickly learned working with business partners, they, the business world moves sometimes a little more rapidly than educational systems and they rightly, for their time, expected outcomes. And so we've made sure that we have followed through on that expectation and that they've been able to see the, the effects of the work that they, and the time that they've been giving us. They've provided, like I said, they've reviewed the core offerings for our middle and high school. They've given us a perspective on how are our courses aligning with our local workforce needs? And of course, with a college preparedness. And then they've also provided input on our Epic curriculum. And they've offered themselves as guest speakers, partners to teachers and opened their businesses to tours. And another really cool thing is they've requested that we develop a soft skills, a people skills certificate. And that would be based on attendance behavior and the grades of our students in our schools. And then our employers said that they would prioritize our students who had earned those certificates when they were hiring. That is something that we began working on last February and then of course, COVID. And so we are, we are getting back to that work now that we have our feet under us, knock wood. And then we've also included, of course, our stakeholders, including our administrators, our counselors and our leadership teams as we have worked on alignment of the course offerings with our workforce. So where are we going? We have been working on, with our partners, business partners, the advisory council, with our counselors and administration and with our teachers and leadership teams to look at how we provide broad career exposure at the middle level. That work is ongoing and we are excited to be sharing that with you, the board, in February. We're also looking at the development of career pathways. You heard Mr. Stockinger in the Apollo video reference the courses as islands. And so the work of this team is really to create bridges between those course islands so that students see a clear pathway and the connection between Epic, well, between middle school to Epic, to a career pathway, to a successful and viable future. Again, in this workforce or in any community. We're also currently defining the role of employers, higher education and community partners in our students' education. We know that we, it, it takes the engagement and ownership of our whole community when we are talking about ensuring the success of all students. And quite frankly, I think that, that is one of the strengths of this Greater St. Cloud community is their, is their willingness to invest of their time, their money, as you heard from Alicia with SME Prime, in, in our students and our schools. And of course, we are so grateful for that. So we are looking forward to sharing our career pathways plan, the recommendations to the board in January. And we'll be giving you the opportunity to gather, to give us some feedback on that. And it'll be in partner, done in partnership with our course registration guide. And of course, the three-year strategic plan and how that all aligns. So we are really looking forward to that and I want to of course, take a moment to just extend my sincere appreciation to our Director of Career and College Pathways, Leah Samms, who has been instrumental in starting this work with the high school programming committee years ago in 2018. And she has just been instrumental, of course, along with Lori Potions, the Learning and Teaching Department, in making this work possible. We would welcome questions.
We will start off with you, Monica, and I promise you, you will be second to last at the next board meeting. So go ahead, Monica.
Thank you, Chair Paul Reese. I, I was, I was just fascinated with those pictures of pumpkins. I wanted to thank you so much for that. It's really, really hard to, really, really hard to follow. I, I heard Lori when she says that before that they just started with all the cuteness. Marcia, so I, I'm happy to see how that's worked. And I'm, I'm happy also in both of you to see all the improvements that have been made. So I just don't have any more comments at this point.
Natalie?
Yeah, I don't have very many. I was also going to comment on the pumpkins, so. I got kind of teary because you know, all of my kids got to go to the pumpkin patch and I'm like, oh, they brought the patch to the kids. It's just, it's what teachers do. It's beautiful. And just to see how teachers are really using this time that Superintendent Jeff and administration team gave them to really prepare students to learn from home as much as we can with our littles. I mean, that's so difficult. But things that you said like setting alarms, you know, my bigs set alarms for their classes too. And so that's just really great, these, these skills that we didn't know we'd have to teach kids to do pre-pandemic, that this is real-time stuff. So exciting between Alicia's presentation and Lori, what you just shared with us. And I always know that we're working very, very hard on our partnerships and the community. And that's one of the things that, one of the highlights always of what, what folks say about 742 to me when you all aren't out in the room is how we really work hard at being a community school that partners with a lot of folks. And to know that we're, that's great that we do that, but why that's great is because our kids that do feel like they want to go to work right after school, right after high school, they're going to be prepared in ways that other students aren't. And so just to be able to make sure that we have, have students that are able to, to complete what they want to do after high school is so great. I, one concern I have, and maybe, maybe I'm not thinking about this correctly, but soft skills, it's, it's concerning to me that that includes grades. And I know that that probably means, you know, you're prepared, you're, you're on time, you are on task, things of that nature. But I wonder if, if you, if Lori or anyone could share with me why that would be in the soft skills certificate, I think you called it?
I think the thinking of the committee was, or is, that it would be reflective of responsibility in terms of passing, right? It certainly wouldn't be tied to an A, but compared to an F grade. Right? It certainly wouldn't be tied to an A, but compared to an F grade, that would be something that they would be looking at.
Okay, so it's just making sure that you're passing your class. I just was wanting to make sure it wasn't like if you get an A and a B, then you can, okay. Because I know some, you know, some students can get As really easily and others are, are stronger more. So thanks for quieting that fear. And thank you both. Thanks for being you.
Al?
I hope I can string this together into something that makes sense. And I forget the name of the committee, Lori, but the the committee of businesses, business leaders that meets to make recommendations on CTE courses. What was the name of that committee?
The SMU Prime, well,
No.
The advisory, the
Advisory Committee.
Advisory, yep.
Okay. On that committee, I'm just wondering, so I was happy to see that there is a Stearns County Commissioner on there. I'm wondering if there have been any other local government officials invited to be on that committee, such as someone from the city or either the city of St. Cloud or the city of Wade Park, or someone from the St. Cloud Economic Development Commission. In the, just in the sense that I think that it is a, to have a committee like that is a real benefit to a city or a council to whose job it is to try to bring businesses to a community. And I always, I would look at our community and I always see a large community that's underserved by willing businesses that want to come here and pay living wages because our poverty rate is very high. The, the school district and the area would benefit dramatically from being able to bring some additional employers into the community that pay good wages. And to be able to present to a prospective employer that's thinking about moving into an area that our school district has a committee that works with local employers and and develops programming that helps to educate students so that they can move out into the workforce, I think would be a really, really strong message for those people to send. And I'm just wondering if we could look at maybe bringing in, there's like, we have a lot of really good employers on there, but they're current employers in the community. But I'm looking at it more of developing additional employers and bringing them to the community and what we could be. And just if we could look at bringing in maybe another official of the capacity that's trying to develop businesses within the area.
I think that's incredibly, it's an incredible suggestion and I will get on that. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Al. Les, you're next.
Oh, no questions. Excellent presentation. Thank both of you. You guys are really good at what you do. I mean, I think I'm feeling proud. Uh-oh, I'm also, I got my dog in here. Boy, I better turn my mic.
Zach, you're up next, huh?
I don't have any questions. It's just exciting to learn about those opportunities and as maybe mentioned before, whatever help you need from the board at, you know, continuing to build those community relationships with employers and things of that sort. Don't, don't be shy. I see that as, as a role of a board members to help foster some of that too. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Zach. Shannon?
No questions. Thank you both.
Marsha and Lori, thank you for a great presentation. Lori, have you thought about law enforcement? I didn't see a law enforcement person in there.
Another great law enforcement. Thank you.
Otherwise, and I agree, I was thinking the same thing Al was too. Yeah. All right. Thank you both. Appreciate it. All right, we will now move on to item number four. It's our action items. First up is the audit report. It's going to be presented by Nancy Schulten, Schulstenberg, and she's from Bergen KDV Limited.
Good evening, members of the board, administration. I'm happy to be here to share with you the results of this year's audit. I'm going to share my screen. And can all of you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So first and foremost, as your auditors, it's our responsibility to issue an opinion on your financial statements. And that opinion is housed in the independent auditor's report. And we're issuing an unmodified opinion again this year on the district's basic financial statements indicating that they are fairly presented in all material respects based on the results of our audit. So that is a clean opinion, if you will, and the best that we can offer to you. In addition to that letter, we have other communications that we issue. And the first one I want to talk about is a report related to government auditing standards. These standards are required because you're a school district in the state of Minnesota. It is outlined in statute that we take a closer look at your internal controls and also compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, grants, those types of things. Based on the work that we completed, we had one internal control finding, and that is the same finding that the district has been receiving as long as I've worked with you. And that is the lack of segregation of accounting duties. Inherent in the size of your business office and the number of people that you have there to operate efficiently and effectively. But it does create some overlapping responsibilities. So something just to remain aware of. It is at a middle level finding, so not the most significant, but does still warrant some attention by you as the governing body. The next report you'll see there is our results related to the single audit. So because of the level of federal funding that you receive, we're required to take a little bit of a closer look at internal control and compliance related to that. And we are issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance. And we had no internal control findings related to the controls over that compliance. So good news there. And then the last official letter we have is on our results related to testing of Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor of Minnesota is very specific about the things that they require auditors to look at in relation to local governments. And they actually give us a guide and a checklist. And based on the completion of that for 2020, we had no written findings. So again, good news there. In addition to these formal letters, we have some informal communication in our communications letter that houses the financial analysis that I'm going to cover tonight. It also houses some required communication. These are things that are standards require us to put in writing to you as the governing body. It would be our tool if we had any difficulties or disagreements with management or anything significant that we uncovered during the audit. It would be a way to share that with you. And I'm happy to report tonight that we had nothing that strayed from our standard language in that area. So clean bill of health, if you will. And then in that letter, we also have some urging issues related to some new accounting standards coming up and some legislative summary pieces that kind of tell you what is the latest at the state of Minnesota with the funding for school districts. Moving on then to the financial information, starting with the basic formula allowance. So general education aid is by far your largest funding source. So it's important to know the calculation and the components of the calculation that go into that. And we start with this basic formula allowance. And key in on 2020, you can see you received a 2% increase, which is what the district has been receiving for a number of years and is receiving for the year you're currently operating in. And the other side of that calculation relates to your students. So we have several sides that take a look at that information in a little bit different ways. Starting with the average daily membership, both your residents and your average daily membership served within your buildings. And the top portion of the chart you see here is the resident ADMs. So these are the students that reside within your boundaries, not necessarily attending your buildings. And that number had been increasing since 2016, but did take a drop of about seventy-nine students for 2020. But overall, if we go back to 2016, you're up about eight hundred and twenty students. Below that, you'll see the ADM served. So that's the second portion of the chart here. That number is a little bit different. You are serving fewer students than those that are residing in your boundaries. And I'm sure you're well aware that of that as a board. There were some changes this year. That number dropped as well. And if you look about to the middle of that bottom section, you'll see the extended time numbers dropping from two hundred and forty-nine last year down to one ninety. And that had to do with targeted services that weren't happening in the spring of the year with the distance learning that occurred. And that is the biggest change along with the residents. Now, when we actually calculate the general education aid for the district, we take those students that were served and weight them by grade level. And since 2016, everybody's at a one point zero with the exception of the secondary students at one point two, so a little bit higher there. And then we add that in, and then we factor in the open enrollment effects. And that's what you see in the two charts, middle and bottom of this slide. Starting with the total adjusted PUM, starting with your residents, subtracting out those residents going elsewhere, adding back non-residents coming into the district. So you can see that in the five years we're looking at, you've definitely experienced net losses due to open enrollment. The bottom portion of the chart here takes a look at the breakdown of those adjusted numbers, starting with the regular instruction decreased a little bit for the year. The joint powers district was pretty flat. And then again, that extended time decreasing based on the distance learning that occurred in the spring of the year last year. Switching gears then to actual dollars, we start with the general fund sources of revenue. So this is really high level and does show that you had about a 1.6% increase for the year, which is about $2.3 million. Largest increase coming in your state sources, up just over 1.1 million. It's about 1%. So that's the 2% formula allowance increase that you see there, offset by the decrease in enrollment and then also some additional special education that was added. There was a new cross subsidy component to that aid for 2020. Federal sources is the other large increase that you see, and that had to do with increased Title I, increased federal special education, and also a new Title IV grant in 2020. The other source is pretty similar to 2019. And you can see that for the local property taxes highlighted in this chart, your gross tax levies for pay eighteen, nineteen and twenty pretty fat. So not a lot of significant changes. If we key in 2019 and 20, an increase of only about $73,000 in total. So very consistent in the last number of years. Moving then to the expenditure side of things, we have a pie chart here that takes a look at the allocation by function. The largest source or largest function for your district, as always, is that regular instruction category, followed by the special education instruction. And we put all of your instructional categories together. It makes up 64% of the total expenditures. So those are expenditures directly on your students. If we look at the overall expenditures for the general fund, they did decrease pretty significantly from last year to this year. Down about 3.3% or 4.7 million. And that had to do with large expenditures in 2019 related to the Apollo fire. So kind of an unusual one-time thing back to more normal levels for 2020. This slide is going to give you some comparison information in taking a look at your expenditures per ADM served. And starting at the top, if we look at just the general fund for the St. Cloud School District, you can see that decreased and that makes sense. The expenditures were down by more than your students were down. If we shift back to 2019, where we have some comparative information, you can see that you're pretty close, a little bit over that overall statewide average. And again, you had additional expenditures in 2019 that weren't recurring. And you can see that highlighted when we look at the bottom portion of this chart, we're starting with the district for 2019 expenditures per ADM by function. So if we go all the way to the bottom, that site buildings, equipment and other, you can see how that is much higher than the state average. And again, those are those Apollo fire expenditures included. The other category that has consistently been above statewide averages and was again for 2019 is that special education instruction. Just with the demographics of the students that you're serving in the district, that is again, higher than statewide averages. When we compare 2019 to 2020 for the district, a little bit of a drop again, and probably closer to the statewide averages. And that sites, buildings and equipment right back down to similar numbers that you see across the state. The next chart pulls the general fund altogether, taking a look at it for the last five years. And you can see that you had excess expenditures in each year until 2020. So your revenues were up, your expenditures were down. So surplus or excess revenues of 4.6 million dollars. Right below that 4.6 million, so four numbers down from the top, you'll see a transfer out, $625,000. That was to help out the food service and community service funds with some of the struggles that they had related to the COVID pandemic. Below that, sales capital assets brought in about 230,000, insurance recovery, the rest of what you received related to those needs, 346,000. And then finally, two numbers up from the bottom is a change in accounting principle. So this has to do with the implementation of GAZV eighty-four and also changes at the state and state statute related primarily to student activities. In the past, those had been reported separately. And in 2020, those were moved into the general fund. So that makes up the bulk of the 624,000 you're seeing there. And there were also some scholarships housed outside the general fund in the past that were moved in due to some administrative involvement there. So you're ending the year just over $22.1 million in total fund balance. This next slide takes a look at the components of that fund balance. So we're back over on the right, and I apologize, the years didn't carry forward here. But the far right is 2020, and that's really where I want to key in on. You have some non-spendable items, that's for prepaid things. So the money has left the building and not available for the future. And then we have restrictions. Those are primarily tied to the state mandated reserves related to some categorical funding. Toward the bottom there, you'll see two new ones, the scholarships and the student activities. So that relates to the implementation of GAZV eighty-four and that change in accounting principle. So those are now moved into the general fund and segregated. You have a small assignment, 312,000. And then unsigned, two numbers up from the bottom of 15.9 million. And at the end of the year, that represents almost one and a half months or about 11% of your total expenditures. So you are residing within the policy that you have outlined for yourself of a minimum of 8% of expenditures. And the next slide takes a look at fund balance in a little bit different way. And this is how the state of Minnesota monitors financial health in the districts across the state. So it gives us the ability to compare you to traditional districts. So what you'll see is on the green bar on the left-hand side of each year is the statewide average. And it has hovered right around 20% for each year. Back in 2016, St. Cloud Area Schools was very similar to statewide averages, decreased for seventeen, eighteen, and now has been moving back up for nineteen and twenty. So in total, you were at 16.7% for 2020. Again, getting close to that overall statewide average. Next, we have the food service fund. Like I mentioned earlier, this fund struggled. Revenues and expenditures were down, creating excess expenditures for the year. It's not a common theme. You had all excess expenditures in 2017, but otherwise there have been excess revenues. And you have the transfer in from the general fund. So you were able to increase the fund balance and end the year at about $967,000. And then the last fund is the community service fund. So revenues were down in this fund and expenditures actually increased. So the revenues were down with fewer programs operating, so fewer fees collected. And then the expenditures were really up related to additional adult basic education salaries primarily. So you did have excess revenues in this fund and then also that transfer in from the general fund. So you ended the year at 2.7 million in fund balance. And when we look to the bottom of this chart, you can see that each category of fund balance is in a positive position. So that's not something that we always see at school districts, but it is an indication that your fees and other sources of revenue are covering the cost of each of these programs. And that is the information I have. I'm happy to take questions.
Monica, you can start us off.
Thank you so much. No, I have no questions.
Natalie?
Since there's nothing new basically from last year, same finding. And I asked a bunch of questions about that last year. So nothing for me. Thanks, Nancy.
Al?
No questions. I will just say that the, the audit and the and the increasing fund balance that we have been able to achieve does show very, very good discipline on the part of our administrative team in controlling expenses. And I thank you for that.
Les?
I have no question.
I have no questions. Great job. I was on the finance committee and heard part of this before. Thank you.
Zach?
No questions. Thanks for paying all attention to those details.
Shannon?
I'm good. Thank you, Nancy.
Nancy, I have probably just one question. I also was on the finance committee, but I missed this part. It comes up every audit, the overlapping levels of concern or controls and it's based on the size of our district. What are we actually talking here? More staff, correct?
Yes. You would need more staff and you'd need to change the responsibilities of your current staff.
How many more staff would it take to fix this problem?
That's hard to say. It could be a few, it could be a lot depending upon the responsibilities that each staff has. So we see overlaps sometimes created just for efficiency purposes. So is it effective and efficient to segregate duties and hire additional people and have something take longer to get done, or can you add mitigating controls that kind of help that out? So there are a lot of reviews and things that happen that mitigate some of those segregation and reduce that finding to that middle level finding. So I don't think there's a magic number as far as staff that you would have to hire.
All right. Got it. Nope. Thank you very much. Thanks for a nice presentation.
Thank you.
We will...I'm looking for a motion to accept the audit report as we just heard.
Jeff, I would move that we approve the audit report as we just heard.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Les, could you take role, please?
Les Green is yes. Zach Dorhold?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Jeff Polrize?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to item 4B, its proposed revised board policy 740 deals with purchasing procedures and soliciting prices, bids, and quotes. It's going to be presented by Amy Scholarood, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Polrize, Superintendent Jet, members of the board. The policy is being presented right now. There have been no changes since the first reading at the last meeting, and the only change is to increase that bid threshold from $100,000 to $175,000.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Monica? Natalie? Okay. I saw you. Natalie?
Nothing for me. Thank you, Chair.
Al?
No, sir.
Les?
No, sir.
Zach?
No.
Shannon?
I'm good. Thank you.
I am also good. Thank you, Amy. Next up is item number 4C. It's an action item. It's a purchase of video camera systems. It's also going to be done by Amy Scholarood, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Yes. So what we're looking at tonight is approval for a CARES purchase. You'll recall the summer we came to the board seeking approval to purchase devices for students in accordance with our board policy. If we do have a purchase over $100,000, that's not in the already approved budget that requires board action. And so this is one item that's come up as a longstanding need, but it's become also more prevalent as it relates to contact tracing for COVID exposures. And our number of our buildings, which is primarily our elementary schools and some alternative sites, we currently don't have either adequate camera systems or in some instances, we have no camera systems at all. And so for the time of day, when our students are in those common areas or in drop-off locations or entering buildings, we really have no way to gather surveillance footage, like I said, whether that be for contact tracing or for other incidents or issues that may arise. So what we've done is we've actually requested preapproval from MDE in accordance with their guidelines for CARES funding, and they have given approval for this as a CARES eligible expense. It'll actually come out of two of the different CARES funding sources because of the timing. So the CRF funds, which is our largest portion of money, which has to be spent by mid-December, will be paying for the actual camera equipment because we know that we can get the equipment here by that spending deadline. The installation across all sites, we are going to start that installation now that students are converting to distance learning, but there's a high likelihood that all of that install won't get done in time to be submitted for CRF funds. So the installation portion will actually end up coming out of our ESER funding. So what we're looking for tonight is approval of the purchase of the equipment and installation so that we don't have to come back to the board a second time for the install. And it's actually two different contract awards. The actual equipment and the installation is through Allstate Communications and that amount is $603,960. And then there's a second purchase to High Point Networks for the network switches and that is $25,500. Are there any questions on the purchase?
Looking for a motion to accept the purchase of both those items, or contracts, I should say.
Jeff, I would move that we approve both of those contracts.
Do I have a second, please?
I have a second.
Is that you, Natalie?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are there any other questions or discussions before we take roll call? All right. Les, could you take role, please?
Shall we go?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Les.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Jeff Polrize?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Zach Dorhold?
Yes.
Les Green is yes.
Thank you, Les. We will now move on to item 4D, scheduling of our January reorganization meeting. It's going to be presented by Superintendent Willie Jet.
Okay. That one caught me off guard, Chair Polrize, in terms of scheduling of that organizational meeting. And so as it relates to that reorg meeting, I know Mary Kusterman's in the background. And so it's just, from my understanding, it's just, are we going to have that reorganizational meeting on that day?
Yeah. The day in question or that's been mentioned is January 4th at 5:00 PM.
Correct.
All right. Anyone have any discussions or questions about that? All right. Looking for a motion to accept that date for our reorg meeting.
I'll motion to approve, or I'll second.
I forgot a comment that I did wanted to do.
Yep, go ahead, Monica.
I just wanted to say I might be online in that meeting, just looking in some arrangements with my family at the moment, and I hope that that is still okay.
Tracy, are you on board with this call?
Yep, she is. She is.
Tracy, I had a question. I know last time when Monica was out of country for the visit, it had to be posted, it had to be available by the public and all that stuff. Has COVID changed the restriction of that? Because...
If the board is still meeting under the emergency section of the open meeting law, then it would be just like these meetings, that someone could be in a remote location without all of the other machinations that are required typically.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. I have a motion. Did I get a second?
Oh, yeah, I seconded.
Okay. Les, could you take a role, please?
Yes. Les Green is yes. Zach Dorhold?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Jeff Polrize?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Les. Next up is item 4E, it's the summary evaluation of the Superintendent Willie Jet. It's going to be led by Les Green, Chair of the Board Personnel and Negotiations Committee.
Thank you, Jeff. What I want to do is just give a sort of a bit of a background on what we did and how we did it and the information we looked at, and I'll do that very quickly and then we'll move on from there. First of all, the information we looked at, we had an executive summary of Superintendent Jet's past evaluations done by Dr. Huff for approximately the past six years. Foresight Strategy Solutions Report from Dr. Shanaya Hawkins Ash. He was in a consulting firm that conducted a survey of cabinet members, union, and lead principals. He had a...he looked at crisis management presentation of COVID-19 because we thought that was important this year to look at how those situations were handled. The concept of delegation of authority, looked at a number of items but that indicated how staff were...or how Superintendent delegated his authority to other staff. Staff demographic improvement, which is rather significant over the past six years. Actually also looked at some improvements suggested by staff for the superintendent. Looked at some input from community people, the community leaders, and then looked at Superintendent Jet's goals completion. And so then we reviewed a draft of a letter prepared by Natalie that would sort of summarize all of those things that we looked into and we will present that. And what's also we did was looked at, and what will not be read into the record, but Natalie will read the letter into the record, but will not be read into the record, is Superintendent Jet's commentary on completion of the goals set for him by the board last year, but it will be a part of the record. There's actually five pages in the document that will be in the record. Only one of those pages will be read into the record though for the moment. So then the board members had a discussion, board members offered their thoughts, and then the conversation with Willie about setting goals for next year. However, we're doing that in a little different way this year. We're going to meet with Superintendent Jet in the Personnel Committee and talk about goals for the next year. This is kind of a tricky kind of a situation we're moving into, not like any other. And so what we thought we would do was sit down with Superintendent Jet and have a lengthier discussion about what kinds of goals he would like to have during the process of next year so that we don't interfere with his ability to manage the district in any way. So with that, what I'd like to do is instead of my reading the letter into the record, our summary, I want Natalie to do it because Natalie actually wrote it and I listened to her read it before and it has a great deal...she knows how to accent at the right places, so I think it would be better that she read this into the record. Natalie, please.
Thank you, Dr. Green. It's my high school acting career that has helped me this far in life, even at age 41. Okay, so this is about our wonderful school district superintendent Willie Jet. The St. Cloud School District has been honored to have Willie Jet as our superintendent for the last seven school years. Year after year, Superintendent Jet's evaluation results demonstrate that he goes above and beyond to prove himself as an invaluable asset to our students, families, employees, and our community at large. The Board of Education met with Superintendent Jet to discuss the results of the survey completed by district leadership staff, along with feedback from 742 community partners. The board and the superintendent discussed plans to continue growing together for the health and well-being of our district. With Superintendent Jet at the helm, we know we will continue to be a district whose decisions are consistent, meaning that we will say what we mean and mean what we say. We are not afraid of standing firm on the decisions that we make, especially when it comes to difficult situations such as our COVID-19 response. Our community partners also see Superintendent Jet as an invaluable asset to our area. Patty Gartland, President of the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation shared, "Mr. Jet is the epitome of a professional that serves with the highest level of honor and dignity. The qualities I most admire are that he's authentic, highly competent and strategic, a thoughtful communicator, humble, trustworthy, diplomatic, courageous, and calm. The board looks forward to our continued work with our remarkable superintendent, who is truly committed to engaging, inspiring, educating, preparing, and empowering all learners, just as our district mission statement states. The Board of Education has strong confidence in his leadership and emphasizes each year that he is the right person for the job. #742Proud, #BeTheDifference."
Thank you, Natalie. Just to make sure we're...it was...let me get my mouth connected to my brain, hang on. Noting the areas of goals for last year, we're connecting with more constituents within the district and outside of the district. Increased capacity of executives so that his team could be...would be more effective and develop themselves, and also his own professional development, which was quite a unique experience, if you'll read it in the report. So with that, I think I'm supposed to ask if there are any questions before we provide Mr. Jet with an ability to comment. Monica, please start us off.
I just have a comment and editing, if you allow me, Dr. Green, about what you said. We did ask Superintendent last year not to increase capacity in the cabinet. What we were asking was to allow them to be more present in leadership. Just don't want you to think that we thought at some point that you were not capable enough of the work that you're doing. We all believe that you're very capable and that you needed to increase capacity. But we did want it to have more...we wanted to have a stronger presence of the cabinet in many other settings and wanted to see your leadership there. So I thought that that was...comment was pertinent. Thanks.
Natalie, anything to add?
No. Thanks for allowing me to exercise my writing skills, Superintendent Jet, and somehow bringing like 50 pages of data into four paragraphs. Don't be so...
Al, anything to add?
It's too much work for me.
Sorry, Natalie. Al, anything to add?
Yeah, I do. I just want to say to Willie and the team, but let's see, about a little over seven years ago when I got on the board, one of the first things that we had to do, it was right towards the end of the first year that I was on the board, but one of the first things that we had to do was hire a new superintendent. And as a board, we embarked on that journey and we looked at a bunch of different candidates. We interviewed a bunch of people and out of that, we selected Willie and boy, did we make the right choice. We've had seven years of fantastic leadership and not only for the school district, but for the entire community. And Willie, you're a unique person who's been able to guide our school district through a lot of very difficult times in a community that has changed dramatically over that period of time. And you've done it with class and dignity and courage. You've become the fire marshal for schools in the entire state of Minnesota. But you're also...I mean, it's funny because people do look to you for leadership when they have an issue on that, but they're also looking to you for leadership now for a whole myriad of different issues and you are able to help guide many other superintendents who call looking for some leadership. In other words, our district is being looked upon as being very successful at what we're doing. And it's credit to the entire community. You've become the fire marshal for schools in the entire state of Minnesota. But you're also, I mean, that's, it's funny because people do look to you for leadership when they have an issue on that, but they're also looking to you for leadership now for a whole myriad of different issues. And, and you, you are able to help guide many other superintendents who call looking for some leadership. In other words, our district is being looked upon as being very successful at what we're doing. And it's, it's credit to the entire community, and it's a, it's a great reflection on the entire community on school district, and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Al.
Les, anything? Les, do you have anything to add? Well, no, I, no, I guess I said no, but I really mean yes. I just want to add thank you for even outdistancing by miles and leaps and bounds even what I thought you could do. So I'm very proud to have been sitting there looking you in the eye and said, yeah, that's the guy. Zach, any comments?
Yeah, thank you times a thousand. And question slash comment is, are you taking care of yourself during these times too? Make sure self-care is on your agenda.
I think the, thank you, sir. And I think the execs would tell you, hey, I don't email or text them at midnight, two, three in the morning. I don't do any of that anymore. You know, I, I get on them when they do that to me. So I appreciate you saying, am I taking care of myself? That is one of my goals, just futuristically for self, and I've been trying to do a better job of that. And the execs that are here, I'm looking at them on the screen. They hold me accountable too bad. So thank you.
Shannon, any comments?
I'd like to say thank you for the dedication the last seven years that you have done for this community and for the school district. And thank you for seven years ago, being crazy enough to think that you'd like to step into this community. I would probably describe us as a tough crowd. And wow, what a difference you've made. I don't think that anybody could have dreamed that you would have made this big of an impact in the district and the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon. And my question for you, Shannon, this evening is, was Liann Chin's any good this evening for dinner?
I, I wasn't there. Where was I?
But somebody told me they were bringing you Liann Chin. No?
I had callers.
Oh, okay. My mistake, but there was, there was a person at Liann Chin saying that they were bringing you Liann Chin.
Oh.
Monica, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Chair Polaris. So yes, Willie, I was forgetting my comments to you. I'm really glad to see year by year you, you continue to, to keep the stake very high and making those choose very hard to fulfill for the next superintendent that comes to this district. It has come always the challenges. You have responded highly to all the challenges that have not been viewed during the years. And it is seen and is noticeable, not only for us, but also for the, not only by us, but also by, by the, by other districts, by other leaders that are looking out to you and are looking up to you and asking for advice. I think that I was impacted by something that we put in our public letter, but I also believe that it was a comment that you mentioned that somebody else told you about our district and in this terms of COVID, about that we, we are being consistent. We are saying what we're going to do, and we are doing what we said that we're going to do. And that, I think that that in this time specifically is, is a big accomplishment. And you have worked with us into, as board members and as, as your team that you have here with us in the screen, in being, in being collaborative about this and, and looking at everybody and finding the skills of everybody and really being able to have us all together in making the right decisions. So I appreciate your, your consultation, and I appreciate the, the human factor that you put in everything that you do. And I'm also amazed about how you are so skilled about doing that with each one person and the many people that you have to do that with. So it's just, everybody, it doesn't feel like you are the superintendent of 10,000 people, students. You're, you're, you know, like those 10,000 people, like, like we were only just 20. So thank you very much for that. And I just wanted to add that to my comments.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Monica. Tracy, I just have one question and then a comment. The eval was six pages, Les? Or five? The question I have, Tracy, is where are the other pages? Are they public record? Can someone view them?
The public record is the summary of the, of the evaluation that the board created. So just the public document for tonight.
Okay. Let me, let me comment on that. And I think that's one of the reasons I, that I changed this a bit. This document is, I wanted to include the, the three pages that Superintendent Jet provided in terms of goal completion. That's why they, they were in there that way. Mary has copies of them, and that was what I would like to have, that was the decision that was what will be the, the public record of his evaluation.
I would just indicate that those are attached as an addendum to the board summary, then.
Yes, that's what I would like done. Because I think it's important that people understand the, the, that when we set goals for the superintendent, we do expect that he would complete them and comment on them. And he's done that eloquently. And so I'd like those to be, we'd like those to be a part of, an addendum to the record. So there's actually four pages to the public document. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Les. The only comment I have, Willie, is it's been an honor serving on the board with you leading the district, especially during this last difficult year. You're calm, non-reactionary, always positive, looking for a solution style. I mean, you utilize all available input from your great exec team, all your district staff. You're a very good superintendent. I hope you and District 742 will be together for many, many more years. And on a personal note, thank you for letting me get to know you and for your support in helping me be Chair the last two years. And lastly, our students, thank you. So, great job.
Chair Polaris, thank you for that. Pleasure's been all mine.
If I might interject, Chair, you might look to Natalie. I think she would like to comment. Oh, sorry. Did I miss you, Natalie?
That's okay. I just didn't know we were at the time. To give the accolades, I never miss a good time for accolades.
It is your turn.
Thank you. I'm just, I could say a lot about you, Mr. Jet, Superintendent Jet. But I think what I've really grown to know more about you this year in our conversations, which you take time, you know, with us every month to talk. And, and usually, we both have a list of things we want to talk about, and then like 15 minutes into our conversation, we're like, oh, that's right, there's a list of things we're supposed to be doing here because we're talking about our kids. So I think that I just want to share with the community because everybody on this team, on this call, everybody knows this about you. But you're a great superintendent, but you're an even better, better father. So thanks for being you.
Thank you, Natalie.
All right. I am looking for a motion to accept, adopt, approve the super, summary evaluation as a superintendent.
Do I, am I supposed to comment now or later?
Nope, comment now because it could change after we vote.
Okay. Well, first and foremost, to everybody here, thank you. The evening started when I first walked into the building, when I was first logged into the Google Meet. I heard Chair Polaris, and he, you started the evening before the meeting even started with the word "team," okay? And you emphasized that word. And for me, fortunately, our team consists of you, the Board of Education, the outstanding executives that you see on this screen, our wonderful teachers and non-licensed staff, our families who trust us with their most prized possession, a supportive community, and all of the various community partnerships that we have and that we're fortunate to have. When you say "team," instantly I think "together." And together, that team has placed students front and center in everything that we do. And I just, I love that about us. And so personally, I'm just, I just know that I'm just a piece of the puzzle. And I feel fortunate to be part of, and I'm truly blessed, to feel and be supported by this committed team. And so Chair Polaris, when you started that, this evening out by talking about team, that was, that's, I totally believe in that. And so it just, it just resonated with me, and I just had to make that comment. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move again.
And Les, you second it? I'll second. Okay. Would you mind taking a role on that, please, Les? All right. Les Green is yes. Zach Dorholdt?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Al Dolgren?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz?
Yes.
Jeff Polaris? Yes. All right. Thank you, Les. Thank you, Willie. Next up, item 4H. It's a proposed revised Board Policy 495. It's up for first reading, so no actions necessary. It's going to be presented by Shannon Hawes, Chair of the Board Development, Policy, and Governance Committee.
Ryan's loading this up. Just a little history here. This policy, we, the board adopted it July 2019. It pretty much aligns with the MSBA policy. There, when cross-referencing back and forth, there were just a few references where we incorporated the Personnel Committee as a responsibility entity in reviewing processes or policies. So the, we, the Board Committee, Policy Committee, has been reviewing this policy for the last couple of months and has had several ongoing conversations about it. And we wanted to recommend tonight that we make one small addition to this policy. And it is under number five, Exceptions, Special Circumstances D, that we are adding, exceptions involving the superintendent, we're adding, or cabinet members, and a close family, and close family members shall be reviewed and approved in writing by the Board Personnel Committee and the written approval shared with the Board Chair. So adding the "and cabinets" portion of that is the addition, basically, that we're wanting to put in there. That's kind of the standout difference here. And again, originating this policy, it does align with MSBAs, but this portion wasn't in the MSBA one. And after reviewing it, we felt it necessary to put it into our policy. I know the Board has had, here and there, a few conversations about this policy. But this is what we're recommending at this time. And any questions about this?
Monica?
So one thing that I struggle that is maybe cultural with for me is that I, I like, I would like more specifically, or description, a more exact description about what close family members mean.
Oh, I, my mic's still on. I think it is defined in, Ryan, can you scroll up under Definitions, number two?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I found it. Yeah.
Do you want me to read that, or can you see that?
No, I, I can get it. Yes, I got it. Yes, yes, I, I think it should have worked. Okay. All right. Yeah, I, I still.
That definition is word for word from MSBAs definition.
Yeah, got it. So I.
Do you want us to come back to you, Monica?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Natalie, anything you want to add?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Al?
No.
Les? Yeah, I just, in, in looking at the, the definition, the content, we kind of have this laundry list of things. But one of the things I don't necessarily see in there is a close personal friend. And that is sort of the kind of, you know, when this, this, this concept began years and years ago, it was relatives, but it also was close personal friends. And so we might want to look at that and, and see if that is useful for including in that definition of, of who, what this, the concept covers. I'm trying to avoid favoritism and unfair advantage or disadvantage. And so if, if we have this kind of a long list of things, anybody who's not in there would, would be qualified as not counted. That, and so that's, go ahead. Tracy, what's the rabbit hole we'd go down if we put that in there? That's pretty subjective where all the other things are proved by, by science and blood.
Well, yeah, those, those other relationships are easier to understand and for people to understand the responsibility to disclose. I think the definition of a personal friend gets really slippery.
Many of those relationships, whoops, many of those relationships get developed after they start working, too. So it could be a promotion after someone's worked in the district for two or three years. They may get chosen, and then they would throw us down the rabbit hole of people being able to say, it's only because they're your friend.
Okay, all right.
Les, I think that, and maybe I haven't read them in a while, but maybe some of our policies under ethics and responsibilities, maybe that would be sort of incorporated in that, that policy, that we would, you know, it's the who you know type of situation. It, it might be caught in, it might be caught in that one, that your ethics, ethical responsibility to your job.
Yeah. Well, I just thought I'd bring it up, and as long as it floats out there in everybody's mind, and it's okay, then I'm, I'm good with, with how we're going. All right, Zach, do you have any comments?
No.
All right, Monica, we'll go back to you.
So when, when I was reading the policy and the purpose of the policy, so the, what I, what I was thinking about in what we're saying or how we're saying is that we are taking care of the purpose of the policy that says, which is, which is also ambiguous, but I understand why. So when it says that the individual have or be perceived to have, so that or be perceived to have, what I understand in, in the purpose is, okay, I'm going to, just for the record, I'm just going to say the whole line. So the purpose says, the purpose of the policy is to establish consistent employment guidelines and to prevent situations where an individual may have or be perceived to have unfair influence over a career development. And I, and because that unfair influence and that, I, in this case, this unfair influence seems to be for the benefit of the person, since we're talking about a relative or somebody that has a relationship with the people. But at the same time, you can have an unfair influence to the person that you don't like. And, and, and then, and then we, we, I guess that policy is not for that. So, so my point about that is that when I look at that, at how do we address unfair influence of people with others? And also looking at, at perceive that, I, I am, I just kept to wondering that what are the mechanisms that we need to address the perception? Because it could be very clear, and we do all that. Can I finish?
Yep.
So, so, but, but the perception might still there. So. So I understand that everything and all cannot be included in one, eh, in one policy. And I, and I do, and, and I like the changes as it is, it's clear. And I'm not suggesting that we do that. But I, I do want to understand what other places are we taking care of these perceptions, for example, or what other issues such as unfair influence that might be also, um, in, in, in that benefit. Um, I do want it to consider when Les talks about friendship, for example, uh, this is still in a small place, in a small town, and this is still a very large district in this, in this town. So the, the likelihood that you're going to have a person that is close to you working in this district is high because we are one of the major employers of this community. So that's, that's, so that's, that, that just defines how it, it, it might not be completely fair that you limited the, the opportunity to work of others. So I'm pretty sure that these are part of the discussions that you have in, in the, in the Governance Committee. Uh, but that's all, I just wanted to make a comment because you're going to go back to your committee and I just wanted you to remember your comments when you do that and see how you address them.
Okay, Mon- Monica, can I just add? Ryan, can you scroll to Section 5, Exceptions and Circumstances? That there is one sentence on here that was put into this policy when we adopted it in July that is not on the MSBA policy that I forgot to mention, and Monica, I think it does slightly address what you are talking about. And it says, "In such cases, the district will promote transparency and review in the decision-making process to avoid the appearance of unfair influence as follows." So, um, this district decided that the, that we are transparent about our process and our decisions that we're making. Um, and we felt that was important enough to emphasize in this policy and our practices. So that was added and it does, it's not reflected, that sentence is not reflected in the MSBA's policy.
And as a committee member, can I add that this isn't an anti-nepotism policy? This is a transparency in nepotism, nepotism policy. We're not, we're not saying that someone can't work in our district if they're related or if they have a relationship. We are saying that if that is the case, then it needs to be disclosed and transparent. But nowhere do we say that they can't work here. And we, we specifically tried to avoid that situation because we are a big employer in a small town. So we know there's going to be situations. And reporting relationships are the most important. So if we look at so, uh, a related couple or a brother and a sister or some, some relationship, and they're both working for the school district, in no circumstances should one report to the other to be as a direct report. But it doesn't mean we can't have them both working in the school district. So it really is about transparency. It's not about, it's not an anti-nepotism.
You good, Monica?
Yes, thank you, I just said, yeah, I, I got that, just wanted to have the comments anyway.
Okay. Um, I have no comments. Thank you very much, Shannon.
Jeff, can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
What does it actually look like to follow out D? Just because I'm part of the Personnel Committee, so is it that? I mean, what is, I've just never been involved in anything like that where it's like, it will be reviewed and approved in writing? So the relationship and what we talk about is typed out? All the member, board members of the Personnel Committee sign it? And then send it to the chair or what, what does that exactly look like?
Well, first I want to comment that the in-writing portion is not new. So that existed prior to being presented tonight. So what we're adding is the or cabinet members section. Um, so how maybe the, um, the Personnel Committee can, I, I don't know the process there.
Yeah, I think they're, yeah, Tracy. I mean, sorry, I'm not like it's my meeting here.
Sure. So when, uh, when we passed the policy originally, we also, um, a, um, in Personnel Committee created a reporting spreadsheet. And so, and we, and we do a regular survey of all the district leadership team, um, where, right, uh, where they report. When we initially adopted the, um, the policy, we surveyed all of the district leadership team and asked them to report any family members. All of those that would fall under the policy are recorded on that Excel spreadsheet. If, uh, if we do new hires now, one of our questions on the online application is, do you have a close family member, um, that works in the administration of the school district? If they answer yes to that, that information gets to me from the application process and is then added to that spreadsheet. And anybody that falls under the policy then is reported to the Personnel Committee. And we make a note on the spreadsheet that it was reported. And then in the circumstance of item D, that it was approved. And I think the only piece we'll have to figure out is then what does that look like to transfer that written approval to the Board Chair? And the Personnel Committee can work through that.
Okay, I think, I think that, I think it's because I wasn't on the Personnel Committee last year.
Yeah.
That I didn't necessarily know all those steps. So, yeah, thanks.
No.
I would have no issue with removing the and the written approval or, and let's see, uh, approved in writing. I would have no problems with striking that, as long as it shall be reviewed and documented. And the written and the doc, and the approval shared with the Board Chair or something along those lines.
All right, it'll be Les and then you, Monica. Les, you had a question too?
Uh, yes, I think that, um, that the written, see, part of the, part of the issue, I think with these kinds of policies is the perception concept. And, and if we are recognizing that there is a relationship, then what we ought to be able to say is we have, we have safeguarded the process so that relationship has no impact on the person's, uh, uh, income or, or promotion or anything of that nature. So we would have to, I think the written concept says we've looked at it and here's how we've protected everyone from, uh, the appearance of, of, uh, of shadiness. And I think that, uh, I've had some discussion with, uh, with one, one person was Al, uh, that it's very difficult in these kinds of situations to avoid the appearance of a problem. So it's what's, what we, we should be able to do in a written concept to say, this is how we've taken care of this. So that people can, can go to that written document and say, okay, they've looked at it, they, they've proved it and they approved it based on these circumstances that, that everything is, is safeguarded. So in, in the Personnel Committee, I think we, we will, we'll have to wrestle with that. But I think the concept of having it in written form makes good sense.
Monica, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, the one thing that, uh, listening to Al, I thought about that I maybe wanted to suggest to maybe incorporate it. I'm not sure, it just came to my mind right now, so I'm not sure how, um, difficult an hour would be. But I do believe that what is, uh, in order to have full transparency or to, um, keep on this by the Personnel Committee, I will suggest a line that, um, has a regular review, could be just once a year, but that reviews the list, um. That, so, so you, so you, so we are, it doesn't have to be, uh, like a complete review, just to, just to, to show it to the Personnel Committee every year. So new Personnel Committee members, for example, may just inquire about the list or realize, oh, this, this is here because so and so are here. Uh, and, and it just keeps, keeps a rolling and keeps the current. And I, and I think that that's part of a, a perception piece that, that we have. And then, eh, we can, we can just report in the board, we have checked and everything is okay. Uh, we still know that this person have this relationship, whatever, uh, there, so just that.
All right. I think we got through everybody but me. Um, my opinion on that would be document, document, document. It didn't happen if it's in writing. I, my opinion is I'd make sure that writing part's there. All right, any other comments and we'll, we'll move on. All right. Next up, item G. It is, uh, Introduction of Resolution from the Board to Superintendent Willie Jett and Administration. It's going to be presented by Al Dolgren, Chair of the Board Finance and Audit Committee. And this is an action item.
Yep, and this isn't really coming out of the Finance and Audit Committee. This is coming from me.
Correct.
So it's, it's not connected to Board Finance and Audit. Um, a, a little background on this, uh, for anyone who might be watching. And there's, this, the state constitution states that the state has a, has a obligation, the number one obligation actually, is to create a uniform system of public schools. There's been a lot of debate over the years of what it means to fund a uniform system of public schools. Does that mean everybody gets the same? Does that mean every school gets this, the same amount per student? Does that, you know, how does, how do you, how do you fund that? Over the years, there's been some lawsuits, one of them being the scheme lawsuit. And it has come down to where the, the Supreme Court has basically ruled that, uh, the uniform, a uniform system of public schools or the funding for a uniform system, system of public schools would be that each, each school is funded in a way that they can provide an education that meets all state standards for all students. And that isn't how it is done at the current time. And the reason we know that, and one big reason we know that is with special education. There's a, we in our district have a $12 million special education cross-subsidy. The state has figured out what it costs to educate a student or a, a special education or the additional cost for a special education student. But they do not fully fund that additional expense. And so in our district, those $12 million come directly out of the general fund, which gives us a shortfall in our general fund for educating traditional students. Uh, and we're in a district where we have a lot of high-needs students. Uh, we have high poverty levels, we have high levels of, of new to country students. Uh, we have high special education, which is taking more money away. So there's a lot of reasons why our district is severely underfunded. And the, the current funding mechanism for school districts in the state just doesn't work for all districts. Uh, students with lower levels of special education, lower levels of poverty or districts with the, lower levels of those are better funded as far as being able to take care of the needs of each and every student. So after, uh, Jerry Von Korf left the board, he took it upon himself to form, uh, him and a few others took it upon themselves to form a committee in the St. Cloud area. And they, they, as a, the committee is called SCERAC. Uh, it's the St. Cloud, hang on, the St. Cloud Educational Rights, eh, Advocacy Council. And SCERAC took up a lawsuit with the state, with the state claiming that the state was underfunding our school district substantially. And it was asking for a remedy or for the state to remedy that underfunding of our school district and, and fully fund what us with what it would take to educate each student to state standards. Uh, Jerry argued in front of the district court here in St. Cloud. I went and watched that, it was a very interesting, uh, two or three hours as he answered questions from the judge. And the judge ruled against us. They, they ruled against SCERAC. Uh, said that we did not have standing to bring it forward, that it would have to either come from the district or the district would have to be sued. We, SCERAC would have to sue the district first. And they also said that the, the state did not have a responsibility to fund each student to meet state standards, that that wasn't in the constitution. Yet it had been already decided by the Supreme Court in the state that that was the, the obligation of the, uh, state was to fund that way. So SCERAC, after losing the, in the district court, appealed and took it to the Appeals Court. The Appeals Court sat on it for a long time because of COVID and then finally got around to reviewing it. And the Appeals Court ruled in favor of SCERAC on the lawsuit saying, yes, you do have standing to do this. And yes, that you have the right to go forward now and sue the state and, and, and put the onus on the state to come back to us and tell us why they aren't going to fund it. Uh, the state right now is in a position where they have one of two things that they can do. They can enter into a settlement negotiations with SCERAC uh, and the district or with the SCERAC with the help of the district. Or they can say, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to have, we're going to appeal the, the appellate court decision to the, to the State Supreme Court. If the State Supreme Court takes the case, it's very likely that they will rule in our favor because they've already ruled that it is, that it is the state's responsibility to fund each and every student to meeting state standards. Uh, so that's, that's where it stands right now. Is the state has to come, they have a time period to come back and tell us what they're going to do. But SCERAC feels that we're in a position to, we're in a very strong position right now to negotiate with the state that the state may not want to take it to the Supreme Court because it's unlikely that they would prevail there. So this, what I've done here is I've put together a resolution from us, the board, to Willie Jett and the District Administrative Staff. Is, in the, the resolution, which I'll read, essentially gives them permission to work with SCERAC, answer questions. So, so as SCERAC would start negotiations with the state trying to settle this lawsuit without taking it to the Supreme Court, our district administration would be able to say to SCERAC, well, here's how we would use the money, here's how much money we would need, all of those things. Um, SCERAC is approaching it somewhat from a standpoint that we already know what the underfunding amount is for special education. We also have a cross-subsidy for English language learners. But we, we don't know what the underfunding amount is for our traditional education students. So maybe a good starting point would be to have the state fund our special education cross-subsidy or a, or a large portion of it. And maybe they could use our district as a test for, uh, the state to see what it does cost to educate all students to state standards. Um, if that would be the case, this particular case could bring millions of dollars in funding to our school districts. So I guess I feel that it's a, really a, a big benefit for us to say, yes, Willie, staff, go ahead, work with SCERAC, provide them numbers, let them know how we would use money if we got it. What types of programs would we do? Would we put a, and I'll give you an example. Uh, one thing we could, might say is that in all elementary classrooms, we want to have co-teachers. Uh, we've had tremendous success from the co-teaching programs. And maybe we would be able to extend that to all classrooms, especially for math and, uh, and, and English language. Those are just, those are some examples. But the, the resolution says, whereas the St. Cloud School, the St. Cloud Area School District 742 currently operates with a $12 million special education deficit and an additional $2 million EL deficit, both currently funded out of district general education funding. Whereas the use of general education funds to provide mandated special education services creates a cross-subsidy from the general education fund to the special education fund and consequently, a funding shortfall to general education in a school district that is already underfunded by the additional costs of educating special student populations in comparison to other districts in the region and state. Whereas it is our position and that of the St. Cloud Educational Rights Advisory Council that the Minnesota State Constitution requires a funding formula which provides for the full cost of providing each student with an education meeting all state standards. Whereas the SCERAC Committee has received positive court decisions in its effort to litigate these funding shortfalls. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of District 742 hereby lends its full support to Superintendent Willie Jett and his administration to engage with SCERAC and state government officials in an effort to settle these funding shortfalls in order to improve educational opportunities to all students in District 742. And what I am looking for on this would be a motion and a second and a positive vote on this resolution. And then if you've seen the copy of it, we'll want to have one signed copy. So if you're not here tonight, if you could stop by the district office, if we approve this, stop by the district office and sign this, that would be wonderful. And that's all I have. Anyone have any questions?
Are you going to have that at the district office, front desk?
Willie, Willie, you could answer that.
If it gets approved.
The answer to that, Chair Polaris, would be yes. I would have Mary coordinate that with Sharon at the front desk.
All right, we will start out by any, or Dr. Green, go ahead.
Let's put it on the table. I'll make the motion to approve.
Got it. Do we have a second to approve the resolution?
Second.
Zach, all right, any questions? Al, is it time sensitive? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, not exactly a question, but I want to make a comment about it. I think that this is important. It's important that we have a communication with the committee, if, I mean, and allow the administration to have that communication since we'll be funding benefit directly to the administration. Every time that we talk about cross subsidy and we talk about special education cross subsidy, I just got the feeling that it sounds a bit as we don't value students with special needs or special education somehow, and we are complaining about it. And I know that is not the case, but it sounds sometimes that we are complaining about that. And I just wanted to just say it out loud, since I got the feeling, so maybe other people also get the feeling. I just wanted to say out loud, that's not the issue. Also, I get the same feeling when we talk about kids that have more needs in education. Is that, it's just that we're required to do more better strategies. And we have been really good at paying attention to students and better at strategies to address the needs of every student. There are countries all over the world that invest a lot more in education for the students that have more needs. And they have a different way of investing in education that they recognize those needs and they make that investment and they have education systems that are much better than ours. It's a recognition from the people that we do need to invest in, that education is really important and it's something that will help us level it up in society and it really pays off. Just wanted to make that comment about that. Why do we need to do this investment? Not only recognizing that there are students that may have different costs, also recognizing that we need to invest on this because this is an investment for our communities and for our state. So just, that was my comment about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that comment, Monica. We have a motion. We have a second. Les, please call roll.
Les Green is yes. Jeff Polaris?
Yes.
Monica Segura Schwartz?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Shannon Hawes?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Zach Dorholt?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Les.
Just a point, I'm assuming this will happen that that the recommendation for how they would like to spend that money if we get it would come back to the board for some consultation.
We are prepared to.
It'll always come back and be vetted. Go ahead, Willie.
We are prepared to share that with, because we're already, we love to dream. We love to be innovative. And hey, and I like to spend money. Amy, as you see, she's not on the line right now. Her screen is blurred out. It's because she tried to get facial expressions with that. But with that being said, yep, we go through the proper channels. We talk about it with the Achievement Integration Committee. We talk about it with Board Finance and we'd share it in front of the entire board.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 5A Superintendent's Report, done by Willie Jett, Superintendent of District 742. Thanks, Al.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Chair Polaris and members of the board. My superintendent's report this evening consists of the following. First and foremost, congratulations to the following students for being named to the All Metro Teams this fall. In cross country, we have Sam Brewer and Tucker 1040 from Apollo High School. In girls tennis, we have from Tech High School, Ashley Tarralli, Leah Donnelly, Kyle Starin, Paige Tarralli, and Ella Morale. And from Apollo, we have Kaylee Davidson. From Boye Thacker from Tech, we have Ethan Miller, Ahmed of Robbie Ishmail, Andrew Holmes, Garrett Mueller, and Liam O'Donnell, and Joe Pearson. And from Apollo, we have Ethan Anderson, Nastah Ahmed, Ahmed Hassan, and Calvin Walters. In girls swimming and diving, we have Kirsten Nelson from Tech. And in girls soccer, we have Kylie Mondalak from Apollo and Jana Benson and Grace Schletter from Tech. Like to say congratulations to all these student athletes. Next, Resource Training and Solutions hosted the annual leaders in the Educational Excellence Awards, the LEA Awards on October 21st, and it was a virtual event through Facebook Live. This ceremony recognizes and celebrates the accomplishments of outstanding educational leaders from member school districts. And over 150 educators and administrators are honored each year. A huge congratulations to the following 2020 District 742 LEA recipients. From Apollo High School, Cynthia Carter, Nancy Meller, and Gretchen Van Heeran. From Clearview Elementary, Patty Montez. From Kennedy Community School, Jody Hyman and Alyssa Kyer. From North Junior High School, Tracy Hare, Janice Pierce, and Courtney Watson. From South Junior High School, Eric Dyla and Lisa Fournier. From Talahy Community School, Nicole Raffenfield. From Tech High Schools, Jennifer Doom, Carrie Cop, and Jennifer Shod. Next, Tech's National Honor Society and WEAT groups worked cooperatively to gather donations through the We Scare Hunger Campaign. And donations were gathered from the faculty and staff at Tech as well as to local neighborhoods visited on October 31st, Halloween. Over 1,200 pounds of food and more than $100 in cash donations were collected. And Adam Holm wanted me to make sure that I mention this. Governor Walz proclaimed November 12th as Community Education Day. You're welcome, Adam. The governor's proclamation can be found on our district website. And that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you much, Willie. We will now move on to Board of Education Committee reports. Al, I would assume you have one for Finance and Audit?
Finance and Audit has one. Finance and Audit Committee met on November 12th at 8:30 AM. The first, so we had a number of items on the agenda that day. We had Jackie Knowles was present from Bergen KDV remotely and went through the audit report, which was presented. It was a little bit more detailed version of what was presented here tonight. Many questions were asked at that. That's one of the reasons that we don't ask so many questions during meetings is a lot of them get answered ahead of time. So we went through that. And the second item on our agenda that day was our tech budget update. As you remember, during the building of the high school, we went through the tech budget almost every meeting. And Amy reviewed the updated tech bond budget. The furniture equipment technology budget has items that have been encumbered. In other words, we've ordered them, we have not received the items yet and have not paid them out. So there's money that is committed, but it has not been paid out yet. Those are coming to an end very soon. The committee discussed how to use any unspent funds. Amy suggested having the superintendent's cabinet develop a preliminary list of things which could be brought to the December Board Finance Committee for review. Finance Committee could then prioritize and recommend the top 10 suggestions and approximate cost for each suggestion to the board at the January board meeting. So we're not looking at actually spending any of the money here. We're just looking at trying to cull the list down a little bit of things. There is some money left. It's not a ton of money left in the budget. And it can be used for projects that we are in need of throughout the district. Or we can keep it and hold it in a fund for other projects. So we just want to be, we want to look at it and we kind of want to finalize that tech budget. And if we're going to do anything, the answer may be as simple as moving it from the tech budget to a, what do you call it, in the general fund, a, or in a, in a general fund, a dedicated reserve in the general fund. So then it would sit right there until that money was needed for something. So and there are a number of things that we may need. So it's good to have a little bit of money left over on that. Then we had, next on the agenda, we talked about CARES funding. Amy reported that she's received the official notice from Sherburne County that we'll be receiving $55,000 of CARE dollars. We may end up receiving more money from CARES Act funding. And we also talked a little bit about the spending, the camera system that we talked about or that we approved earlier this evening. And then the last item on here is tech, we talked, discussed tech tennis lighting, and this has come up before. It was one of the items that we were planning to do for the high school, but held back because we didn't know if there would be any funding left. Since there is, we had all of the electrical sub done. Everything is ready to go. It's just a matter of putting up the poles and the lights. The quote for putting in tennis court lighting right now is approximately $130,000, which is extremely low. It's about half, I believe, what we thought it was going to be. The quote is part of the joint powers contract and would not, it would not need to be bid out, but the project would need board approval. The committee recommends approval of the project and it'll be put on the December 2nd board agenda. So it can be discussed at that time.
Thank you, Al. Les, you have one for Personnel and Negotiations Committee?
Actually, I just wanted to note that our report was the evaluation report that, of the superintendent, actually.
Duly noted.
Thank you. As opposed to no report, we did have a.
There you go. Achievement, Integration, and Equity Committee, Natalie Ringsmuth, Chair, you have a report for us, Natalie?
Yes, I do. So we met, oh, I think that was this week, but it's feeling like a long week already. We talked about three items. One was our ongoing discussion on school presentations to the board. And Dr. Huff presented some information to us that the assistant superintendents were able to gather from building principals. So keeping with the theme of teamwork, we're making sure that not only are we getting the information we need as a board, but that the people who are giving us this information or building principals also have a say in what they would like to share with us. The next step in this process is for Dr. Huff to draft what she will present at the first board meeting in December and get it out to Zach and Monica and I, who are on that committee. And then Dr. Huff will be presenting it to the board, like I said, in the first part of December there, as we go forward with actually having a plan for school presentations that everyone can get behind. The other two things we talked about, one was super exciting and new, and that was a secondary online academy proposal, more like an initial research for that by Jessica Moore, the Secondary Curriculum Specialist. So she talked about what an online learning academy could look like for starting out in high school and then possibly going down to middle school as well and be a really big asset for our district and something that we have a little bit of practice on lately, but could possibly be a new and improved way to help some of our students. And then Strategic Plan Board Presentation, we're actually going to be talking about that in the next meeting because that's coming up for board discussion as well. And at our next meeting, we're also going to review our committee purpose and structure because it's the blessed month of December. That means that's what we're supposed to do. So, and that is all that I have.
All right. Natalie, can I offer some feedback on school presentation part of your thing?
Yes.
I, I would like to see the graphs and the charts that are shown during a Zoom meeting, Zoom tested. Like make it so you can read the thing, make a little bit better labeling. We should have the technology work for us. Because it seems like they're always too small. And if they're too small for us, the public's not getting anything out of it either. So if that's possible, increase the font, whatever it takes.
Okay, so, okay. Thanks for sharing that.
You know what I'm driving at? Make it so it's actually more beneficial.
Yeah, like make sure that the labels are there, like for the, yes, I know exactly what I'm talking about.
Got it.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Monica.
Well, actually, I have a question for you, Mr. Sher. Have you gotten complaints specifically from people about that? Or are you basing your comments based on how you see that? Because I do believe that you will see it differently, that the public, the public sitting on one screen. And I think that they have been tested, the presentations.
Yeah, the only comment I got from a couple of people, the public were, I don't know if that would, to make them simpler so they can digest them because we know some of the details, so we assume we know it. The other part was, the viewing part was just my observation. So I don't know what the public sees, but simplify them if possible, better labeling. Go ahead, Les.
I think that, I agree with you, Jeff. I can't see it either, but I noticed that when the auditor presented, they, they used, she used the full screen, which was different than the way that we've seen them. So try full screen first because that might in fact do it. Because I think Monica is correct, that if you can get it on your full screen and take us off the screen, it's much easier to read it. But I can't, I have my glasses on and I was, had my face right up to the screen and it was having difficulty. I couldn't read some of the things. It just, but following it because I was being instructed to.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's great to know. And we'll bring that feedback back because I know Dr. Huff probably heard that. Yeah, Dr. Huff? Yeah. So that's what we want to do is we want to prepare our principals to give, we want to hear the information, but we also want to say what we expect so that we're both on the same team. And so that's important information, kind of best practices sort of thing.
Can I add something to the report?
Please.
Just wanted to mention more comment that we heard in our evaluation. So we did the exercise last time for how we wanted the board presentations. And then we had a large list of what was important for us about the presentations and what did the board wanted to get. And we responded about, I don't remember what the statistics, but like 60 or 80% that we wanted everything in that list, which, which makes a little bit impossible for a presentation to be crafted if we just wanted everything at all. So just wanted to make you mindful of that and thinking a little bit more in how we kind of organize that and get down into what we're saying and maybe thinking about other ways that we could get the rest of information that we want.
All right. Okay. We will move on to item number six, future agenda items. Coming up in December, we will learn about new high school course proposals. We will get a report on the World's Best Workforce Plan. We will have Proposed Revised Board Policy 601. It's School District Curriculum and Instruction. It's up for first reading. We'll have Proposed Revised Board Policy 616, School District Systems Accountability. That's also up for first reading. And then we will also have an Athletic Facilities Update. This will conclude the meeting. Enjoy, be safe, and have the best Thanksgiving you possibly can. And Al's waving goodbye to me. Okay. All right. Goodbye, everybody.
No, I wasn't waving goodbye, Jeff. No, I wasn't waving goodbye, Jeff. I was, I, I wanted to ask either Superintendent Jett or Assistant Superintendent Putnam to stop down here and grab this resolution.
I will do that. I already received instructions from Mary Kusterman to pick that up from you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hang on one second. When does that need to be signed, Al, Willie, Mary? Is there a deadline?
It would be nice if it was by the end of the week. By end of day Friday?
Would board members raise your hand if that's possible?
If we're at the office, we already signed it, or we're at the district office, we signed it. So Al, myself.
Okay.
That's everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Gobble, gobble.